Six twenty twenty-three to order. Let the record reflect that all of our council members except for Ruby are here and Ruby is stuck in traffic and will be here or on the Zoom as soon as she possibly can. Is she on the Zoom right now? Anyway.
Can I just make a request that when she does, if she zooms in, just notify me so I can note the record?
Yeah, Robbie, do you hear that? No, she wouldn't be, but when she does get on, be sure that you let Dana know. All right, first item. Well, first thing that we're going to do today, I get the feeling we're going to have a lot of public comment, public comment cards are on the table up in front. We have a public hearing and we also have just a normal public comment, please be sure that when you were putting a public comment card in that you specify whether you're looking for just general comment or public comment for the public hearing that we have, and if you're speaking for that public hearing, there is a for and against thing there, so let people know which one of those because they get called separately. If you would then hand them to our acting city attorney today. Gentlemen at the end of the table up here, you have your cell phone, please make sure you've got your ringer turned off. We mock people that don't do that later, and if you would please stand for the pledge. So I'm gonna apologize, I'm a little under the weather today, had food poisoning over the course of the night last night. And PSA coming out of that, you know, the thing that they tell you about not eating rice, it's been in your fridge for a couple of days. Don't eat rice, it's been in your fridge for a couple of days. I can vouch for how bad that can be, and I want to appreciate very much that our fire department, when they saw me walking in, immediately said, what on earth is wrong with you? And I just spent a few minutes down there getting IV at the back of the office and feel a little bit better, but probably won't be as well, won't be as loud anyways, normal, so. My apology for that. First item tonight is the approval of our meeting agenda, anything anybody needs added or changed, any of you, you're all set? With the agenda, that's all right.
Um, yes.
Yeah, all right, so can I get a motion in a second, please, to approve the meeting agenda for tonight?
Make a motion to approve the meeting agenda tonight.
Your second?
Council member Foster entered.
All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, post name, agenda stands approved, next up is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May second twenty twenty-three. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to approve those minutes?
Make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion, anything that needs changed? If not, all those in favor of adopting the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed to meeting minutes stand approved. Uh, we had hope to have our state rep here today, but she had a schedule conflict and not seeing Mandisha here. Uh, to give a little legislative update, but what I'm hearing from everybody is the traffic coming back from the land is really bad, that's why Ruby's had a hard time getting here, so uh, if Mandisha shows up later, we may, we may try to work her in. Uh, we also have a proclamation for the Superior Court there, Kathleen Robinson. That's something that all the cities in whole county are doing for her, I'm not going to read it directly, it's on the record. So the next item on the agenda is public comment, which is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council to provide their input and opinions on any matter not scheduled for its own public hearing tonight. Again, since we have a public hearing, please be sure that you specify appropriately. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone directly to council. First stating your name and address for the record.
Not yet.
You're allowed your minutes for your personal remarks, we have any public comment?
First, we have Robert Richardson.
Robert Richardson, nine four two five Hutchinson Ferry Road. The city makes up rules whenever and however it wants. On January twenty-third, I was verbally attacked and threatened by the city manager. At the May City Council meeting, I stood before this council specifically asking why nothing was done. I've yet to receive an answer. In fact, the mayor, the so-called leader of our city, has not contacted me at all throughout this whole process. A high school level investigation was conducted by the city attorney who also has business dealings with the mayor. What was not brought up in the investigations was emails from within the city. I found these using open records acts. Emails from Mr. Rakovich talking with Lori Surly about two days after this happened. Emails with Mr. Rakovich discussing this with the mayor, emails with the mayor calling Danine Crawford's statements a lie. Seems like everyone got a chance to speak except me. The Georgia Municipality Association puts a handbook called Government in the Sunshine, A Guide to Georgia's Open Meeting and Open Records Law for Municipal Officials. This guide was put out to help cities like ours that don't know exactly what they're doing. There's a question in sex, question and answer section on page nineteen. Questions are hearing or appeals regarding employee disciplinary procedures subject to open meetings. Answer, held to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal, or periodic evaluation, or rating of the city employee may be held in closed meetings. However, if any of the above involves the receipt of evidence or hearing argument on personnel matters, including whether to impose disciplinary action or dismiss a city employee or officer, then it must be held in an open meeting. You saw me refuse to shake Mr. Rakovich's hand last meeting, but what you did not see was three hours earlier, my wife and I were at City Hall and Mr. Rakovich walked right by us, actually bumped into my wife opening the door and did not say a word to either of us, but wants to put on a show at the city council meeting. I will not shake the hand of a man who is calling me a liar. Mr. Rakovich said three, he tried three times to apologize to me. The truth of the story is he sent me an email and I made three replies and no apology was ever mentioned. I'll be glad to pay for a polygraph for myself and Mr. Rakovich to take and make the results public. In fact, I'll pay for one for Dana Witcher as well. Better yet, put us all under oath in front of the city council, first section two point zero eight of the city charter. Thank you.
Danine Crawford.
Danine Crawford, five five seven five Cochrane Mill Road, District Two. I am the president of the Chat Hill Citizens Alliance, and the only citizen concern that I want to bring forth to this council tonight has to do with the cycling event for the Grady fundraiser that happened earlier this month. There were two porta-johns that were placed right next to my in-law's mailbox. And there was also sidewalk chalk on the road pointing the direction for the cyclists to pull into my in-law's driveway as a rest stop. They actually had parked in my in-law's driveway and they had actually put up a sawhorse, a metal sawhorse in the driveway to block traffic in and out. My father-in-law had to ask them to move the sawhorse so that he could leave his property. I went and sat with Robbie and talked to him about this, and I'm very concerned because this is not the first time that this event has utilized my in-law's property during this cycling event. Two years ago, they actually erected a tent on their property. They have never reached out to my in-laws via telephone or by mail to actually get permission to be on their property for this, so I would like for you to figure out who does, who you need to speak to to make sure this doesn't happen again. When I sat down with Robbie and spoke to him about it, I gave him some very good suggestions of other locations that might work out better. Like right up the road is Porter Terry Road that is closed off to through traffic. It's a small little dirt road that they could actually go in and they wouldn't have to block the road off, or they could utilize the new gravel parking lot at Cochrane Mill Park to filter them in there and set up extra porta-johns there also. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention because my in-laws brought it to mind and just to see what you could do to make sure this doesn't happen in the future. Thank you.
No more public comment.
All right, next up are our staff reports, and we'll start with the financial update from the city manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, staff and members of the committee and those you in the hall, if you can hear me, okay, I'll speak a little bit louder. Good, okay, we're working on it, thanks for coming, everybody. For the, uh, just unmuted people on Zoom, so they're unmuted, people, hopefully they stay muted, but I did that because I needed to have a council member foster be able to unmute herself, so anyway, from a financial standpoint, what I was thinking about, because we have the budget uh, public hearings tonight, and I was going to talk about the budget, and I know you got a big crowd and you got a lot of folks and you got a lot of things on agenda. If the council is willing, I can talk about the financials, or if you want to wait, we can address the bigger picture in the budget. It's, if you, I just didn't want to take much time during staff reports. Yeah, I think so, and the only other report I have is just a report, speaking of finances, today is the year anniversary of our finance director, who's been here a year with Michelle Colling, so, uh, speaking of the budget. She made it a year. So. I'll see you back when we talk about the budget.
Next up is a fire department report from Chief Brett.
Mayor, council, citizens, you have the printed report, hope you were able to pick it up there. I went on ahead and included a copy, or photos rather, of the incident that occurred yesterday evening on South Fulton Parkway. The incident with the small maroon vehicle is another incident that occurred on Saturday evening at Cascade Palmetto Works and Mill. Obviously, more traffic, more probability for incidents. Yesterday was a horrific situation. We were given that call uh, around six thirty as a car on fire with a person entrapped. And um, our fast response would not change the outcome for that driver of that small sedan you see pictured there, that is a small Infiniti. And he, he was deceased. We did everything we could to try to reinstate him, um, but that was to no avail. Um, I simply want to emphasize, if I may, the three points that I have listed there uh, within that little piece, and that is that we more than often have problems with people driving through or around a scene. Uh, we were on a fire on Saturday morning and had someone drive through our scene and over our fire hoses. So, there's that, and then there's the need for people sometimes to stop and ask questions and pull up and walk up to the scene and you're working with high-pressure equipment, you've got all kinds of moving parts, we don't need any distractions. And, and then there is this unintended consequence of pushing out information, which drives more inquiry, more attention to the scene until we are ready to give information. So my emphasis to citizens and friends is really, don't be that person. Don't be that person. You wouldn't want me distracted or my people or any of the emergency responders distracted if it was you or your family member involved. And so I ask you to help me get that good word around. I can answer any questions, Mayor or for council.
Brett, do you think that with maybe some more fire personnel, I mean, as this city grows, which we're growing.
Yes, sir.
We got enough development, development on the books now. And it's there and said, I mean, we're gonna grow, I'm doubt about that. What, what do you need? I mean, the management of that particular scene. I mean, is it, is it a matter of maybe more police personnel, you know, maybe another couple of police officers that can respond with you? I know, I know you're working closely at Johnson, and I know you all have a great relationship, thank you, by the way, for the job that you did. You know, I mean, what, what do you need? What, I mean, if you were given a blank check, what would you, what would you write in?
Well, obviously, we would, we would like to have more distributed services with fire station and personnel to serve the different zones, if you will, or air regions of the city, and I think that's coming. I, 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 I hope that it will, our population's growing, the growth you spoke of, so I think that's coming. Um, I'll leave that up to you guys to help me know how, but I have the plan, councilman. I do, um, I do have to say a good word for City of South Fulton and Palmetto, when they heard that this incident had occurred, and this is true on many other incidents, they immediately respond. I had, um, Station Six call and say, do you need help? And when I couldn't help, because we were involved in getting a patient out of the car, they just came on from the Cedar Grove River Town area, and we were able to immediately utilize them to handle aircraft landing zone on the Parkway. So we get really good help from our neighbor departments, really good help, but they are small, Palmetto, Fairbun, they're relatively small for the growth that they're experiencing, South Fulton. A little more so, but they've, they've got growth coming on, so we are all are gonna be a little more stressed. So we have to definitely have a growth plan, and we've tried to map, map our way towards that, and we just have to keep our sight on the, on the horizon.
And there is a piece of public responsibility there, the point you made is absolutely perfect. You would not want your child in an accident possibly being affected by someone else in a hurry to get home driving over the fire hose and crimping it or whatever, right? It's never worth that, so please, let's just reconsider it too.
While I'm in the teaching mode, I, I have to say, thank you, of course, because it's, it's our commitment to serve citizens, and citizens give back. And part of me giving back is making sure we provide that level of service that you all deserve, that everyone deserves, so I just have to be candid and do our best job. Thank you.
Next up is a police report, Chief Little. Last one, yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, uh, before you have the police department monthly report, and I'll be brief, because I know we got a lot tonight. The, the, one thing I want to highlight is, again, our dispatch calls at a hundred and thirteen percent increase over the same month last year. This is a trend you've heard me talk about, month after month, we are getting busier and busier. Um, and the types of calls that we're responding to are becoming more serious. The rest of the data, you know, is pretty consistent with what we're seeing, but I do want to go along with what Chief Brett brought up. The initial report yesterday in social media was that the bridge collapsed at the river. Was posted on Facebook, which got a lot of people very upset. Uh, I'm not sure where it came from, or why that, it, you know, as we know, it was a fatality accident. We had a driver that attempted a high-speed pass on the right, on the shoulder, who hit a guard rail and crossed the road and totaled a tow truck. Uh, it's difficult to tell from the pictures that you have, that's, but that tow truck was totaled by the Infiniti. Uh, so I don't know how fast he was going, but you can see that there's a considerable amount of speed to cause that much damage, uh, and I would caution everyone, before you post something on social media or respond to it, please verify that information. Uh, I spent quite a bit of time last night and this morning responding to people that the bridge, in fact, was there intact and that there was no danger to the community from that. So it, like I said, you know, we're, we're always here. You know, if you have a question, please contact us and let us know. And finally, I'd just like to say, you know, it's been an amazing journey here with the city, you know, I was sworn in on September eleventh of two thousand and eighteen. Uh, and it's just been an incredible journey, and I thank you for the opportunity to serve the community and our men and women of our police department. I'm looking forward to my retirement, but I'm certainly gonna miss the city.
And the city is gonna miss you. Uh, we have an incredibly professional little police department, and you've had a great hand in putting together that team, and also uh, the professionals and procedures and processes, the fact that we're, and I'm gonna forget the name of it, but the city.
We are Georgia State accredited.
Accredited, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I was gonna say certified, and I knew that one right, um, which is a big deal, and most cities aren't, right? So we're operating at a higher level than most of the small towns around us for sure. And while I appreciate the fact that you love this city so much, that mountain biking has kind of taken over your life. And, and I feel like mountain biking may have something to do with your early retirements, and I'm, I'm not that happy about that. Just want to say thank you again for all you've done here.
Mr. Thank you.
My, of course, deep appreciation for all that work.
Thank you.
Next up is our public works director, Darrell Windland. We'll add some levity tonight, always.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and citizens of the beautiful Chattahoochee Hills. I don't have a deep voice, it's pretty nice, let me feel bigger. Quickly, quickly, uh, Jim leaving one year, uh, next week I'll start my eighth year working here. Unbelievable, what a beautiful seven years, beautiful. Uh, we've, we've come together and done a lot of things, a lot of things, Mayor and Council and the staff, I'm, I'm glad, so glad that I started there to be able to transition this city into what it has become, and I hope we got more years to make it even better. That's what I look forward to, and I'm thank you for the, the honor and privilege to serve with y'all. Uh, real quick, T-Sploss, this week, it will be sent out, RFP will be sent out thirty days. And so when it gets back, uh, it will be before you devote July eleventh. Uh, it won't be in your packet because by the time the thirty day get back here, so if you want to, any questions or whatever, y'all know how to reach any of us to help you through it, so that's, so we're at with that, a lot of legwork, uh, Wayne Smith, our engineer and I have re-walked the roads and re-walked them, and we've done a lot of work to make sure we get exactly what the city needs. We've done a lot of work repairing and keeping the roads and ceiling, so all these seven years that we've done that, it's time to start topping and covering up. We've, we've done a really good job preserving our roads. I look, some of the roads that we done, if we wouldn't have done the things we've done, we would be in far behind, so I look forward to the next coming T-Sploss project moving forward. Yes, sir.
What's, what's the road, road schedule? I know, I know it's four or five roads we're gonna work on, which, which ones are they gonna do, start with first when they get?
That's part of the, the budget, the RFP, we got different types of roads, what we're gonna do, gonna do some deep debt repair. Yes, sir. Yep, that's right, we still waiting for bids to see the numbers come back, so then we'll know exactly which roads, because some roads need more than others. So that's what we're going, as soon as we hear something, you'll know, yes, sir, yeah. As soon as you, you'll know, it's like I said, it won't be on packet, but when we get it, you'll, Robbie will definitely let you know what we're doing, I mean, for sure. Second thing, the kiosk over at the, uh, Cochrane Mill Park is taking cash only right now, it happened Friday evening. The Greg and I did everything we can to fix it, we took it apart, tried to do, but it's credit card machine itself is bad, that's all it is. They're sending a new, as soon as it gets here, I'll get out there and I'll reinstall it and hopefully we're moving forward, but it's communicating, it's doing everything it's supposed to, but that credit card part is, I've been here seven years, and it's that, and it's that time, so. Um, if you go out to Cochrane Mill Park, and if you see that the staff have been working on the new parking lot, we have, Robbie and I have tried to find out exactly if the tower's finished, not, we haven't heard anything, but we are still moving forward. Greystone, uh, been a great provider and working with us, they've provided a lot of power poles to line uh, the parking lots to keep people from driving over the edge. But we've been working at a parking lot, also in the day use area where the roots used to stick up, so we uh, ordered out a bunch of fines and gravel, got the day use area looking really good, spent a bunch of time there. And also, uh, let's talk about ball season, ball season ended up last weekend, we, success, thank you, Lala. Such amazing volunteer staff that we have for the ball season, it was very successful. I think it went very well, and I'm so proud to be part of that. That's what I have. Questions?
No, but I wanna, um. No, thank you.
Yes.
All right, so I do want to say.
Yes, sir.
I get copied on all of the Google reviews of the park, and I know I just sent you a slum the other day.
Oh, that was nice to hear.
How many five-star reviews that park gets, uh, and that's in great part because of the hard work you guys have done, Parks Commission, so I just appreciate that work.
Yes, thank you.
I walked somebody down there for the first time, they hadn't been the other day, and I was looking at that bridge again, and again, it's just so boring. The bridge that we put through, the historical bridge.
I would, I would just like, before I walk away, to say one thing about my staff. None of this is possible without the staff that y'all have given me, that they work hard, it's hard, because I moved, when Dave Healy, one of my guys that's been with me for several years, was the Parks guy, he did a, a outstanding job. He won, he's the one takes care of the city hall and offices and the ball field and Cochrane Mill, so I had the guy I worked for, moved him up. He's doing a good job, but that's the thing is, these guys take pride in what they do, and I can't take all the credit, because these guys take ownership and they think of the city the way I do, and I'm so thankful for that, and thank you for the, uh, allowing me to have them staff. I'll take more if you ever need to give away, I'll take that blank check.
Next up is a report from the Community Development Director, Mike Martin.
Mayor and Council, I'll be able to be very brief, um, you have in front of you the permit numbers, um, everything this month, or the totals for this month are almost exactly the same as a year ago. We're off by one in a couple categories, uh, same number of new homes, uh, seven, both this year and a year ago. Total permits issued, just one less than last year, COs issued exactly the same as last year, less inspections, but I think that reflects a few slower months that we've had uh, behind us, so I think the, um, numbers of, of homes reflect that, uh, Estates of Cedar Grove is now, um, uh, they're now building in there, so they've got a few building permits in there, and I expect next, uh, next month's numbers to be even higher. We've now finally issued the final plat for the first, um, phase of Serenby that goes down into Coeita County, and so I'm expecting a bunch of building permits on those, those new lots. The only other thing I have is a planning commission meeting a week from Thursday, uh, that's the fifteenth at six thirty PM. And the only thing I have right now for that agenda is a public hearing for the rezoning that we're having a first read of this evening, the Simpson, um, property in, in Serenby. So that's all I've got. Any questions?
All right, the next item is one of our public hearings. Twenty-three dash oh one five, which is public hearing in action on an ordinance to amend the zoning map for his own sixteen hundred acres from RL to HMMU, and I'd like.
Mayor and Council, as you know, there are several parts to this application, uh, the main, um, main request is a rezoning of one thousand six hundred and six point one eight acres from RL Rural to HMMU mixed-use hamlet to create a film production studio. Um, there are also three variances and five special use permits attached. Um, the variances include one to, um, Unified Development Code, section six three dot C, to reduce the minimum number of residential units required in an HMMU district from point five units per acre to zero, and to increase the maximum allowable percentage of property devoted to non-residential units from twenty-five percent of the developable area, uh, which is only thirty percent of the site, uh, up to a hundred percent. Um, so what that does, it, it, it takes away the requirement that they use most of the land for residential and build at least eight hundred residential units. Lets them go, um, as low as zero if that variance is approved. The second variance is a variance to UDC section five six dot G to increase the maximum open space which can be transferred off-site from twenty percent to fifty percent, so there's an, there's a, an open space requirement in the zoning, it's technically sixty-five percent, because we also have five percent civic makes up the seventy, seventy percent preservation of that sixty-five percent. Um, the code allows you to do some of that, up to twenty percent of that amount off-site. Um, rather than within the district itself, allows an increase in the developable footprint, the request is to increase, um, that twenty percent to fifty percent. Um, what that does is give, um, give even more benefit outside of the Hamlet District, uh, because then there's more preservation happening outside. Uh, because then there's more preservation happening outside also based on the conditions. For every acre of developable footprint that they increase, the off-site open space requirement is three point three three acres, which ensures that all the land considered in total maintains that seventy percent, uh, uh, protection requirement. So, um, if they do transfer, um, open space off-site, um, they will be moving the benefit of that open space out of the district into the rural district. And they'll also be preserving a whole lot more land than they would have otherwise. So, um, that's, uh, uh, how that would work. Uh, finally, variance number three is a variance to eliminate all the requirements of Article twelve regarding thoroughfares and those portions of the development to which public access is restricted. And, um, this acknowledges, um, to some degree, the same as that other restriction or other variance number two about open space, acknowledges that this is a little different than a regular hamlet. You're not creating really a, a community in here where people are living and, 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 and stuff. And, and that, that most of the site, the site behind, uh, where the public access is restricted is really more of a, um, a, a corporate campus or, um, industrial site. Um, and so all of those regulations, um, related to how thoroughfares, how buildings relate to thoroughfares and how the network has to form a street network and all that sort of stuff, doesn't really apply, um, isn't, uh, it isn't as important. So that would, uh, eliminate those thoroughfare requirements if that's approved. And then these, uh, special use permits, um, uh, first is, uh, one for a motion picture or sound recording facility, large, um, understandable. Second one is for a hotel, third for a college, university or professional school. And, uh, by, uh, applicant's request and by conditions, um, that would be for, uh, training for the, um, uh, film-related arts and technology. Four is an event center, um, in the conditions, that's, uh, conditioned to two hundred and fifty guests or fewer. And then number five is for recycling center and that recycling again by applicant's request and by condition, proposed condition, uh, is limited to, uh, recycling, uh, materials that, uh, are produced on site as sets are built and, and taken apart and, um, and, and that sort of stuff. Um, there was a hearing, uh, public hearing before the planning commission, uh, earlier, uh, I'm sorry, in May. And, um, uh, planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the ordinance, which contains all of these, uh, proposals, uh, with a set of conditions. We've got about six pages worth of conditions. Um, what you have in your packet, um, shows a, is a document with tracked changes. Um, the, uh, original version of that document is what the planning commission had in front of them when they made the recommendation. Uh, you can see the changes that have been made to it since then. Um, there are a couple of things that I will, uh, that I will point out. Two of those conditions, uh, that were in front of the planning commission, they specifically acknowledged, um, uh, an intent to do more work on, to consider. And one of those was number thirteen, um, which, uh, had been based on an assumption of some land preservation, um, not linked to anything and really not, um, detailed at all by the applicant. That requirement would be out and that land preservation would happen in the context of increasing the developable footprint if they, if they end up doing that. That's what that variance, that second variance was, was about. And then number nineteen, which refers to standards for, um, historic preservation. Uh, the reference to Secretary of Interior standards, uh, for treatment of historic properties has been eliminated. And it's basically, um, uh, best efforts, um, they will do what they can. If the, you know, if, if there happens to be a tornado that tears down the building, they're not required to rebuild it, um, that sort of thing. But, uh, again, you can see here what, uh, what those proposed changes are. I also, um, uh, handed out before the meeting, a couple of other proposed changes to the conditions. One is a brand new condition and I've left my language over there, but basically it would not allow the city to issue permits in the development until it sells to the applicant. So the existing owners then, um, uh, wouldn't be able to do, develop movie studio. There's no intention that they do that, but, um, but it provides that additional restriction. Um, and then finally, in number three, we talk about how some of the off-site preservation might happen. The city wanted to ensure that, uh, they are preserving high quality land. So the land, any land they preserve that way by purchasing it directly. They can always use a TDR program, but if they purchase it directly, what it said, uh, says in there right now is a hundred acre minimum. Because we want, we didn't want just little pieces here in there. Um, uh, it's an attempt again to encourage higher quality preservation. The proposed addition to that would also allow them to preserve land that's been identified by the city as part of the Ag Commons program. Hasn't happened yet, but if the city identifies that land, it will be considered by the city to be high quality land and, um, high quality for preservation. So, um, so that would also be, um, if you, uh, uh, choose to, uh, approve the application and the, um, uh, conditions as amended, um, that's what.
All right. So let's go ahead. If you have been reading the public hearing rules and we'll go ahead and do the public hearing and then go back to whatever discussion we've got left.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is public hearing procedure slash zoning hearing procedure statement for Chattahoochee Hills. Mayor will allow each side to speak, uh, each side equal opportunity to the floor and establish time limits for public hearings. If you desire to speak in support of or in opposition to the item, you must fill out the public comment card and turn it into the city attorney. Uh, if you don't have that card, we won't call you. Those called to speak will be taken in order and the speakers will receive, uh, were, were received by the city attorney. All speakers should identify themselves by name, address and organization, if applicable, before beginning their presentation. In this case, the applicants will have ten minutes to present their, uh, their case. Each, uh, each person speaking in support of or in opposition to will have three minutes to make their comments. Applicants and all others speaking in support of the application will speak first. The applicant may choose to save some time. Uh, some of the allotted time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Those opposing the issue will speak next. If any time remains, the opposition will be allotted to rebut the final remarks made by the applicant. Uh, following the presentation by the applicant, those speaking in support of the application and those opposed to the application, the city staff shall present its position. The city clerk, uh, will keep track of time and will inform you when your allotted time has expired. During the public hearing, members of the city council shall listen to the presentation made by all those who speak. No action on their part is in order until the mayor declares the public hearing complete. In addition, the applicant shall not submit new material to the city council during the meeting unless requested to do so by the council members. All material which the application wish, uh, which the applicant wishes to be considered shall be submitted to the city planner prior to the meeting so that the material may be included in the normal distribution packages to the council. Finally, because this is a rezoning matter, the applicant and any person who desires to speak during the public hearing who has contributed campaign contributions totaling two hundred fifty dollars or more to any member of the, of the mayor and the council, he or she shall disclose such contributions prior to speaking during the public hearing. Failure to disclose such campaign contribution constitutes a misdemeanor.
Thanks. And based on the number we have, I'm going to say we're going to have forty-five minutes aside. Uh, you don't have to talk as long as you have, but you know, we want to make sure everybody gets their opportunity to say what they've got. Only thing that's going to make you feel better about that is that you're watching the news and saw that Atlanta's hearing on the training center last night went until five thirty in the morning and we will not be here that long. Uh, but I'd go ahead and open the public hearing and, yeah.
First, we have the applicant is here.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Uh, my name is Carl Westmore and I'm representing Kane Studio. Patrick Millsaps, who is the CEO of Kane, is here. Azar Taylor Pound with Foley Design, Chad Apple and Chris Maddox with Southeastern Engineering, uh, and, uh, they will all be available for, sorry, they will all be available for questions. Um, this, and by the way, to, to address the city attorney's point, we filed the required, uh, disclosure statements on behalf of the applicant, the owner and myself, uh, they have not needed to be admitted. So that's all part of the record. I think that, uh, I want to be respectful of everyone's time. We've had a lot of hearings on this. We've had a public meeting. We've had a lot of, you know, offline, uh, meetings and discussions, I think, uh, to an extent that the, the dead horse has been sufficiently beaten. So what I want to do is address some of the issues, uh, that keep recurring and then talk through the conditions. Because I think and I appreciate all the work that Mike and others have done, but I think the conditions have addressed encapsulated most of the, uh, issues in an enforceable way for the city, uh, that have been brought up. Uh, one issue that was, has been raised is whether amendments to the code, which the city council adopted in February, uh, were necessary for and therefore to allow this application to move forward. The answer to that is no. The applications were filed on December first of last year. Uh, all that your amendments did, and, and by the way, in, in December of last year, there was a provision for a special use permit for a film studio. Uh, all the amendments did was allow us to eliminate a couple of variances and, and use permits, which we did. Another question was, um, does this approval, if it is approved, does it allow building anything that's not shown on the site plan? Condition number six, uh, makes it very clear that it does not, this, the development is conditional on the plan. If they want to build anything else, they've got to come back through, it's got to go through, uh, a similar public hearing process. Another question that we got quite a few times was, what will we see from the road? Condition number six, uh, says that there can't be anything within six hundred feet except agricultural structures. And even those have to come to city council for review and approval. So I, I think that is addressed as well. Another question that we've heard is how do we know, how do we, the city and citizens know that we'll get the dedication of land for the, uh, expansion to the park, for the river trail and for the trail along Campbellton Redwine? Uh, the conditions in the, in various places have, uh, milestones and, uh, tied to the development. So that the city's, uh, right to enforce that is we're not going to issue more permits until we get that, until we get those dedications. What happens if for some reason the project is not built? Again, condition fifteen makes it very clear that this is the city council's intention in that event to, uh, consider a version of the, of the zoning to the existing RL district. Is the city responsibility for, does the city have responsibility, financial responsibility for any services? Number twelve, the applicant will buy a fire truck for the city. Number thirteen, there was a discussion about this from the chief's, uh, comments earlier. If there, if the city council decides that we need land for a fire station, there's an obligation on the applicant to dedicate that land. Uh, and in, uh, condition twenty-four, which is lengthy because it addresses a lot of the traffic, uh, comments that we got from GDOT and Greta during the DRI process, uh, makes it clear that the, um, uh, that the city has no financial responsibility for those improvements either. What about noise and dark sky? Condition thirty-one, which was a recent addition, makes it explicitly clear that both of those ordinances apply to this development. Uh, and finally, what about any new issues? What is, what about something we didn't think of in connection with the film studio? And the last condition, uh, is an agreement to work with the city in good faith if any such conditions, uh, come up. Now, uh, Mr. Morton has, has, uh, brought up, I appreciate the, um, two conditions. One, I think was simply a clarification that if you've identified land to be preserved, that land would be able to be preserved, uh, as off-site open space. Uh, the other one, which had to do with the city not issuing permits related to any of these uses. In other words, not related to the film studio or recycling center or the hotel or anything like that, uh, was at a, at a request from the, uh, current owner of the property. Uh, they were concerned. I don't think this could happen, but they were concerned, uh, that they would have some obligation to dedicate land or, or otherwise participate. Uh, if the purchase does not go forward and the purpose of that, uh, condition is sort of belt and suspenders that, that no, that's not going to, that's not going to happen. So, again, I, I, any of us are happy to answer questions. I want to be respectful of your time, given the amount of that, that you and members of the public have already heard about this case. Uh, I do appreciate the cooperation of the, uh, staff in developing the extensive list of conditions. I'll reserve any other time.
And we'll, we'll go ahead and hold our questions before after the public hearing. Carl will be here if they can answer anything my students, uh, that way we can get through the public hearing part of this.
All right. Uh, we got first public comment from a gentleman doesn't want to speak. Uh, his name is Sam Smith and he indicated that he supports the movie studio. Jim Durritt, Durett. Now I apologize if I, uh, mispronounce your name.
I'm called anything. Uh, Jim Dorrit, one zero five nine two Serenby Lane, um, Mayor, Council. As a board member and then Chief Operating Officer of the Georgia Conservancy in the nineteen nineties, I worked in the fields of environmental stewardship and growth management. As the Vice President of Environmental Affairs at the Metro Atlanta Chamber, I developed their environmental sustainability and smart growth programs. As Executive Director of the Urban Land Institute's Atlanta District Council, I worked with the best real estate developers, architects, land planners and other land use professionals, not only in Metro Atlanta, but across the country in order to share best practices for quality growth and development. As Executive Director of the Livable Communities Coalition, I worked with some of our regions.
Cause I walked away.
I worked with, uh, with, uh, some of our best, uh, planners and other land use professionals to provide guidance to local governments throughout the Atlanta region for how to achieve the best outcomes for communities when growth is coming. And today I spend my time trying to retrofit Buckhead after decades of auto-centric development and decisions to make it a more walkable and complete community. What you're considering today, the rezoning of sixteen hundred acres along Campbellton Redwine Road is, in my opinion, a wonderful economic development opportunity that fits extremely well within the overall plan for Chat Hills, with which I am very familiar. I also believe that the process that has been brought, that has brought you to this place has been both fair and thorough. And that the recommendation of the planning commission for approval should be adopted. Thank you.
Maggie Goodman.
Greetings to everyone. Uh, Maggie Goodman, seventy-four, seventy-five Rico Road. Uh, I'm in favor and my husband is in favor of approving Project Rosebud. We find that it is architecturally pleasing. Uh, it's going to be a corporate campus. It's going to be nestled in between the trees and will form a part of the landscape. There will be opportunities to form co-partnerships in the future with companies to give students opportunities in this area to gain quality employment and training skills. They have conformed to all of our standards and have also complied with any and all additional requirements. This development will be a plus for our city. They meet all of our zoning requirements and have asked for, uh, for very few variances along the way. Both my husband and I are in agreement to make Project Rosebud a part of the Chat Hills community. Thank you.
Donna Copeland.
Hi, my name is Donna Copeland. I live at twelve two hundred Hutchinson Ferry Road. Okay. Did you hear me? Was that okay? Okay, good. Okay. My family's been here since nineteen forty-eight. My father and my uncle bought the land that we're on right now. Um, at one time I had three siblings, myself, grandparents, um, uncle, cousins, we all lived either on Hutchinson Ferry or right on Jim Star, which is right over in Calhoun County. I just tell you that to let you know that this area is very important to me. We have been here for a long time and, um, I don't want to see a lot of changes. But, uh, we were in this area when it was just Fulton County. And at that time, we paid a lot of taxes, but we didn't get a lot of services. That's just the way it was. We were in South Fulton and you just didn't get a lot. Twenty years ago, my cousin's niece ran under a car with a go-kart. We called Fulton County ambulance. They never came. I mean, we waited and waited. My dad was an invalid at that time. He had twenty-four hour nursing care. There was a nurse, my cousin lived next door. She ran over, thank goodness. Uh, we finally had to call Coweta and Coweta was not what it is now. It wasn't close, but they did come. And I only say that is because our services now are so much better than what we had then. And I appreciate everything that we have now. Although I still want them to be better. A year ago, we had to call an ambulance for my husband. It would not have saved him, but it took twenty-nine minutes for that ambulance to get there. The fire department was there very quickly. They did everything they needed to do, but the ambulance took too long. And the reason I want the studio here is because the tax revenue, I would love for our services to be enhanced. I think it's been very well planned out and I think this is the best case scenario. I have. I have a grandchild that has allergies, they need an EpiPen. I have family here. We just need more services and that the only way we can have that is with more money. Thank you.
Janice Barton.
I think I'm short. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Janice Barton, 9170 Selborn Lane. Forgive me for reading, but I don't want to ramble and Dana pull the plug on me over there. You have all been tasked with an incredibly difficult decision in regard to the movie studio development. And we appreciate the time and attention you've given to researching the issue and listening to your constituencies. Few of us readily accept most change, and we especially don't want it in our backyard. We like our lives just the way they are. But we know change is coming, and we're trusting our city council to make the best decisions to ensure both our vision and financial sustainability. Time stands still for no one, and it won't stand still for Chattahoochee Hills. A movie studio may not be the perfect solution, but I hope we don't let the perfect stand in the way of the good. As Mayor Reed reported in his thoughtful memo on this subject, Georgia is a property rights state. Developers who are prevented from doing what the zoning allows them to do can sue, and they will win. And such victories would strip us of our protective zoning. If we want the warehouses, garbage dumps, and rental subdivisions that are the norm in the rest of South Fulton, then resisting intelligent development is the best way to be sure that we get them. I'm in support of Kane's Project Rosebud. Their plan seems thoughtful of our goal to preserve the rural look and feel. I'm hopeful the gift to the city of land along the river is indicative of their interest to engage as involved community members. And of course, the $5 million in potential tax revenue upon completion has a meaningful impact on the city's long-term financial viability as it would triple our tax revenue, property tax revenue. But in all honesty, I don't live next to the proposed development. But several of my friends do, and I realize what I'm asking of them. So I also challenge Project Rosebud. When we look back in 20 years, validate my decision to speak and support by always being concerned, involved, and engaged community members.
Got 30 seconds.
It's doubtful that production companies that come and go will care about little more than the bottom line and time schedules. They don't live here. We hope you will demonstrate care about the city and citizens. We're a small city, you will be our neighbor. That word has a lot of significance in a small community. We hope you'll be a good neighbor. Thank you.
Suzanne Seymour.
Thank you. Suzanne Seymour, 7765 Campbellton Redwine Road. Was hoping to put the map up. I am theoretically in favor of the studio, but we are a neighbor that is immediately adjacent. And the Kane Studio property wraps around. So if you take a look at the upper portion on the right, kind of looks like the state of Texas, but when you drop down off the panhandle and go to the very end of where the path is, it's going along Campbellton Redwine Road, that's the south end, go to the north end, the walking path that's along Campbellton Redwine, it stops right at our property. So that rectangle is 11 acres. That first rectangle that's at the end of the property is our property. And our house is 200 feet from the edge of the property. Our concern is the position of the mailroom, how large that's going to be, and the parking around it. We will be able to see that from our property. And so as I said, we're in favor of it. But for that reason, we have been talking with the architects, and we are hoping that they will possibly shift that to either closer to where the White House is or on the other side of the White House, or in fact, use the little White House that's being saved as the mailroom. So we ask for that. The construction entrance, which is going to be used a lot for these first couple of years, it's going to, there's going to be a lot of traffic right there. Right now, when we come out of our property, it's difficult to see out, and it's easy to get sideswiped without all the extra traffic. So I'm still concerned with the fact that with a mile and a half of frontage along Campbellton Redwine, where the most amount of homes adjacent to the property are at that north section, if it would be possible to move the entrance down to either in front of the White House or down further so it doesn't impact the people directly across the street. That's it. All right, thank you.
Maria Hansen. Maria Hansen.
Hi there. I'm Maria Hansen, 8135 Atlanta Noonan Road. I've spoken out several times before on this project, so I'll make it brief. This proposal has been controversial, no doubt. I have family, friends, and neighbors who work in the television and movie industry. I support our tax, our state's tax incentives for the industry as they've added millions to our state's revenues and provided good-paying jobs and skill sets to many Georgians. Because of these benefits, I've been excited about the idea of this thoughtful and innovative plan that will follow our city's vision of keeping it rural and land preservation. And there are others in our community that may be in favor but are hesitant to express their opinions. I want to read a comment I received after reaching out to gather feedback about this very issue. This is what they wrote to me. Quote, "No problems with me, Maria. I'm all for it. It's out of the way, won't add to congestion, will bring money in, jobs, et cetera. It's a win-win-win, 100%." End quote. Sounds like a person who has looked at this proposal from all sides. This quote is from councilperson Troy Bettis. Thank you.
Kevin Bashore.
Thank you. Okay, my name is Kevin Bashore. I live at 1190 Serenby Lane. The challenge facing us today is Kane Studio progressing, regressing, or digressing from the original vision of Chat Hills. My ancestors traced back hundreds of years working farmlands of South Central Pennsylvania. Generations of my family attempted to keep our land pristine and beautiful and unchanged, protected from urban blight. We had very good intentions, but no understanding of how to be proactive, to work within the local government system to help protect and sustain the land we loved, build value into our present daily lives, and provide room to grow in creative and life-giving ways for future generations. Today, what remains of my family's land is either pinned against cookie cutter residential clones or imprisoned on all sides by miles of industrial warehouses and trucking ports. We lost the overarching war because we didn't have a plan. We simply hoped and prayed that our land would never change. And we didn't partner with wise development. No planning and no involvement in the planning fostered our greatest fears, urban blight. I moved here because this is a city with a vision and plan, and I love it, is a city of trees, a place for community and nature to coexist, honoring natural beauty and human life. And change is coming, whether we like it or not. So it seems that we have two basic choices, intentional planning or unintentional eyesores. Kane Studio does not appear to be a cookie cutter corporate clone or residential sprawl that is currently cropping up on every border. It does not seem to be regression or digression from the Chat Hills vision. It does seem to be a good plan, progressing forward with the vision in mind, retaining the woodland beauty with human life and interaction. It seems to strike a balance with a business model that is financially viable, adding jobs to our city, hand in hand with adding recreation, entertainment, and value to our daily lives via the hotel, restaurant, park, and walking trails along the river. And it will add a new tax revenue base, obviously, for supporting the city infrastructure. So if not Kane Studio, what? Ugly warehouses, endless cloned residential neighborhoods, or trucking ports? I'm reminded of the age-old phrase, a bird in hand is worth two in the bush. So Kane Studio just might be our bird in hand.
Got 30 seconds.
Please don't sacrifice a potentially worthy project for hope that something better is in the works ahead. Please consider a yes vote. Thank you.
Peter Clemens.
My name is Peter Clemens, 9119 Selborn Lane, Chattahoochee Hills. I want to speak out in emphatic, in fact, support of this project. The people, the fine people of Chattahoochee Hills who have spoken up about the liabilities of the project, many of them are 100% absolutely correct. There will be more traffic. There will be inconvenience. There will be air quality issues around the construction. All of these things will happen. However, the economic developments that this represents, this project represents, to me, are almost overwhelming. I want to specifically address the Chattahoochee Hills residents who spoke at the last meeting regarding crime in the area, and would the movie studio attract criminal behavior or crime? I am a 48-year veteran of the motion picture and television business. I am now retired with my own business in Chattahoochee Hills. I have never seen a safer place on this planet, and I've been a lot of places, than a movie studio. A movie studio, whether it be Warner Brothers, whether it be MGM, Universal Studios, whatever, simply cannot afford to have the kind of crime that you envision might pursue on the heels of the development of a studio of this nature. They simply can't have it. Top talent would refuse to come here. They simply wouldn't come. So I feel unbalanced that this is an absolutely well-considered, very carefully planned, and deliberately approached project. And I have to, again, and I'm not speaking as a veteran of the motion picture industry here, but rather as a citizen of Chat Hills. I believe that the desperately needed, and frankly desperately needed, revenue that will issue forth from this project will benefit all of us, and that the impacts, relatively speaking, will be minimal. Thank you very much.
We also got Raymond McPhee, who does not wish to speak, but he indicated that he supports the project. So we're going to do opposition.
We have no other parts of support. So we'll approach those opposition, and we also.
Okay. Gail Abrahamian. I'm sorry, she indicated she does not wish to speak, and she opposes the project. Mike Meek also indicated he does not wish to speak, and he opposes the project. I apologize for mispronouncing name, but Rob Rickwish. Come up, speak please.
I take it we've moved to the opposition side. Mayor, city council, I appreciate your attention to this very serious issue. I think we're all concerned about, I'm sorry, 8440 Hearn Road. I think we're all concerned about the possible impacts of this large industrial development on the west side of Chattahoochee Hills. We should be. There's going to be costs associated with this. The question is, are the costs, do they outweigh the benefits that might come from increasing some tax revenue? I don't think we have a good answer to that question. Because we don't know. We just heard earlier today about accidents occurring on South Fulton Parkway. Unfortunate, terrible accidents. We're going to have more traffic along South Fulton and along the roads leading into this, to this development, which is on the west side of Chat Hills, as far from our neighbors to the east, on the other side of 154, as you can possibly be unless you're in the river. And I think that's an important distinction because this facility with trees around it is not all that different than the Amazon warehouses and similar large industrial facilities that are being built to the east of us. And the part, the problem with it being on the west side is it's furthest from the people who need it most. One thing that Hollywood speaks to is its interest in diversity, equity, and inclusion. We, I think we all share that concern to some degree, perhaps not as much as Hollywood does. But we're putting this facility supposedly providing training and employment opportunities as far from the communities that need it as you could possibly have while putting the costs that might be associated with this on us. And we also have, in addition to the DEI issues, which I would think the film industry would be particularly concerned about, we also have, and there's been some mention of this, concerns about the ecological or climate effects of this. We don't have public transportation out there. The public transportation coming from the city of Atlanta, where that diverse community lives, and in the cities between us and the city of Atlanta, doesn't extend out there. That's going to be a problem if we want to provide benefits to the people who need it most and opportunities for the people who need it most. Thank you very much. I'm concerned about the ongoing climate effects, DEI effects, as well as the effects we all have about turning this from a rural-focused community into an industrial development, one that sounds nicer. It's a soundstage, but is in effect a large industrial development. Thank you.
Jake Wood.
It's the best analogy I can give you, folks. I'm sorry, I'm Jake Wood, 12460 Hampton Road. Best analogy I can give you, folks, is you ever been in a room watching TV? Bunch of folks watching TV, and somebody comes in and changes the channel? I feel like I'm in that room. I'm in a room watching Rural Farm, that kind of thing. All of a sudden, somebody comes in and changes the channel. If you didn't want what we have, and obviously you wanted it, why would you move here and say, oh, we're going to make it better by bringing this? We're going to make it better by bringing that? You knew what was here. You knew what channel the TV was on. Why did you come and all say, I'm changing the channel? This is what you really need. It's not what I really need. It's not what I want. You know, I guarantee you. Now, I'm listening to people talk about how great it is, and we're going to have a movie studio. You do realize that you don't need 1,600 acres for a movie studio. There's a whole lot of places you can put a movie in a computer. You can record a whole album with a computer. What's going to happen, and I'm going to tell you what's going to happen is this. They're going to take that, they're going to build it. But then once movie studios get to be like those malls, and you know what happened tomorrow? The internet. The internet killed all those malls. The internet fixed it. So been by Shannon Lake? Have you been by there? Go by Shannon Mall. The internet took care of that. The internet took it, but you can buy it cheap off the line. Technology always changes. Keep that in mind. I'm not saying we can't change. I'm just saying that we have to be the change. We have to find the change. We have to make that change. Everybody's talking about how great it's going to be for jobs. I'm thinking about Serenby's looking for a job. I may be wrong, but I don't think anybody at Serenby's looking for a job. They don't want bus stops down there. You think they want bus stops in San, how are these people, these diverse people that are coming down to get these jobs? How are they going to come, listen around a bus stop there? And then we got paper on the road. My wife walks up and down Hampton Road picking up paper. I'm like, what are you doing? She's like, oh, they're making a mess. Guess what? It's going to be a bigger mess. That $5 million you think is going to be, that's not going to be enough. That's not going to be enough money. You know how much it costs to full run and have the pipes and stuff fixed when you got a You know how much it costs to full run and have the pipes and stuff fixed when you got a sewer and you will have sewer lines down there. You will have sewer line. You're gonna have people that are gonna tie into that water. They say, oh, we got water down. We're gonna tie into it. It's got chlorine in it. It's got, you ever go out and talk to somebody about why their safety tank blew up? You know why it blew up? Because you got chlorine in the water. Once that chlorine gets in that kills all the nitrogen and bacteria to eat that other stuff up. You're making methane. You know what methane does? It go boom. Okay?
Got thirty seconds.
I don't have anything else to say other than the fact that you don't want that to happen. Okay? I urge you guys to take your time, go slowly with this, because I do feel like these people are out of our league. I know they're out of our league. I feel like we just need to bendo. Okay?
Renee Prince.
Mayor and council Renee Prince at one three zero one five Hamilton Road. Um, district five. Um, what are heliports and helipads? Heliports and helipads are designated helicopters until rotors, landing and takeoff areas. They range from simple, unprepared, open fields and parking lots to locations that support scheduled air services, complete hangars, fuel on aircrafts. Maintenance capabilities over ninety percent of current, current facilities are of the simple, single aircraft variety with no fuel or services. Where can heliports, helipads, facilities be, be located? Vertical flight aircraft allows these areas to be anywhere. There is sufficient space. For instance, they could be located on ground level, elevated on buildings, parking garages, canopies, bridges or over freeways and interstates. Why am I speaking on this subject when the item doesn't appear to be on the application at this time? Through an open records request, emails were discovered between Mike Morton, the city planner and Carl Westmoreland, legal representative for Kane Studios. On March the seventeenth at ten sixteen AM, Mr. Westmoreland sent an email to Mr. Morton stating, I am now told that development needs a helipad. Does that require an additional request? On March the seventeenth, twenty twenty three, twelve thirty three, Mike Morton sent an email back, email to Robbie Rockovitz, Mayor Tom Reed and Rick Lindsay, our city attorney. Just wanted you to know about this inquiry. Helipads came up previously. We took time, took some tentative steps on this while back, but we don't have specific language on it. I'll be reviewing the zoning language again to determine how it fits with seven dash two F. Used to specifically list that is prohibited unless the zoning administrator determines the use to be similar to a list use. On March the seventeenth, twenty twenty three at twelve forty four, um, it states so quicker and clearer than I expected the zone from Mike Morton. The zoning includes a private airport use. Here's a definition from section seven dash one. For time purposes, I will not read the zoning section seven dash one. I think studio, um, and then also it says, I think a studio helipad fits here well enough. I have them add to the list of special use permits. Mike. On March the seventeenth, twenty twenty three at six twelve, Mr. Morton responded back.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. As you can see, the discussion of a helipad had been made and presented to our city planner. If the applicant desires a helipad, will they build a ground level helipad or use the roof of the hotel? Will they be required to come back to the city council for this type of permit? I would encourage this council to consider table in this application for thirty days or reconsider taking this application at stages phases so that you can have a better control over its development. Thank you.
Robert Richardson.
Robert Richardson, nine four two five, Hudson Ferry Road. The city makes up rules as they fit, say fit with no regard to the city charter. I'm bringing this up because the studio needs TDRs in their plan. On February seventh, two thousand twenty three, the studio, the city council voted the new TDR ordinance with a three to two vote. This was an illegal vote and the ordinance should be thrown out. Section two point one four, page fifteen of the city charter states an ordinance shall not be adopted until the title of the said ordinance shall be read at two city council meetings provided the beginning of said meetings shall not be less than twenty four hours nor more than sixty days apart. There are two exceptions allowed, one being emergency ordinance, the other being an ordinance adopted in the first meeting of the calendar year. The illegal vote meets neither exception because the second read was at sixty nine days, which clearly makes this vote invalid. Mr. Lindsay was notified of this by the city council and he just said it would be okay and swept it under the rug. Part of a quote from Lori Surley, speaking at April twenty or April fourth, two thousand twenty three meeting at the fifty seven fifteen mark, quote, I really think we ought to um, honor the charter as our, our highest order of um, rules for the city. As Lori says, the city charter is the highest order of rule here and therefore this ordinance must go through the process correctly. Now, as that the city council tabled this vote on the studio for sixty days. This gives the city a chance to correct the TD, the ordinance and avoid a lengthy lawsuit and allows Kane Studios to know the TDR process will be valid when they need it. The TDR, TDR process would rush to a vote because the city, by the city because of Kane Studios' application and Merrill Park Development at the corner of Cochrane Mill and South Fulton Parkway. I have emails obtained through open records that will back everything I say, and I will have more emails when the city, from the city when they release it to me. I've yet, uh, which I requested on March twentieth, two thousand twenty three, and have yet to receive despite others getting their open records request before me. Thank you.
Deanna and Crawford.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and Project Rosebud participants and citizens of Chattahoochee Hills. My name is Danine Crawford. I'm at five five seven five Cochrane Mill Road, District Two. We are told the applicants are going to donate a fire truck and land for a fire station. But who is going to pay for this station? The zoning meeting made clear that while the fire chief is not norm, normally in charge of the fire truck, the vehicle must be onsite and staffed by the studio as required by their unions and insurers. So they have to have it anyway. The land is a tax write-off, so good for both sides. However, no details have been offered about who pays for this station. Whose primary mission is to serve a private business enterprise? Meanwhile, our citizens over in Saran B actually need a station. So shouldn't we build one to serve our citizen communities first before paying even a single dollar to protect a private business interest that would pay for its own fire control? I ask that at least council representative Lowe speak to her knowledge of who pays for this, keeping in mind the needs of your constituents in your district. And all that has been raised by your constituents, the citizens whose interests you are charged with representing. It has been made clear that you don't understand crucial details that must be nailed down before you can vote in good conscience. Before you make a move in what you think are the city's best interests, answer yourselves these simple questions. Ruby, do you know the full future extent of this development? Richie, do you know the net gain for the city against the proposed tax revenue? Lori, do you know the cost that will be incurred by taxpayers as differentiated from the city? Camille, do you know who will pay to build the new fire station, whether or not on donated land? Troy, do you understand the nature of the financial outlays the city will undertake in response to the stages of this project? There are other questions, but for time, I simply charge you in front of your voters. Unless you can say a firm yes to these questions, you have no right to risk the city's future. Without tabling this measure to study and gather solid information so that you actually know what you're voting for. To vote for something this important in our state of ignorance on vague phrases like tax revenue and donated land is to ignore the serious duty that you have been charged with as our representatives. Do your job and the due diligence a month will offer. Vote to table this measure for thirty days, if not sixty. Thank you.
Nancy, Nancy Richardson, do you wish to speak? Uh, Nancy Richardson is opposed. Uh, Leonard Jones, do, do you wish to speak? Leonard Jones is also opposed. Uh, Serena Mose is opposed, does not wish to speak. Uh, Leela Rhine. I, I apologize for messing up anyone's names.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Council, citizens Chattahoochee Hills. My name is Lila Rhine. I reside at ninety eight seventy five Woodruff Road in District Two. When I heard about the studio a year ago, um, I had mixed emotions and I started making a list on the pros and cons of it, and I just came up with more cons than I did pros for the studio. So I oppose the studio. But I also have had a lot of mixed emotions through this series of talking with my neighbors, my family about what they thought about the studio. And I have some questions and concerns and a request. The application from Kane Studios was in, when it was proposed in September of twenty twenty two was over six, one thousand six hundred and sixty acres. There was a partial containing six hundred seventy nine point nine three acres, of which sixty two point four four acres was removed from the application. My question is, why is it not in the current application? What will it be used for? Will it be used to purchase TDRs to increase the height of the buildings? And then vaguely, I remember a comment being made to this, you use for maybe ball fields, which is my expertise, I guess, in a way, since I organized the T-ball league and coach pitch league. I'm very interested in that land, could envision a nice softball complex or even a recreational area, equestrian trails. Donating lands to cities is nothing more than a tax write-off. And I would like to make comments to, so much has been said through the public comment in the last year that I've heard and I, I hate, I don't want to repeat it, but there's been so many things said on the pros and the cons of this. But there's one thing that has been coming up to me from several of the people who asked me, where's the financing coming from? Are you a hundred percent sure that Mr. Millsaps has a financial means to complete this project? They were looking and brought to my attention in August ninth, the twenty sixteen, in the publication deadline, they ran an article concerning Mr. Millsaps and London Dairy. Mr. Millsaps' vision at that time was to start up a production studio using a multi-phase business plan. The first phase was raise equity through investors. Second phase was creating the management and production side. Third phase is produce revenue by optioning content, much talent with the content and then pulling the investors. London Dairy folded in twenty nineteen when they only could produce one point eight cent of their projected investments. I hope, is this the current model that's going forward, Mr. Millsaps? And what happens if the financing falls through even after the zoning takes place? I look at the state of our economy. I even hear some studios are having problems. I know there's a writer's strike, but I have friends that work at Trilith and they're not working right now.
Got thirty seconds.
Um, finally, the ultimate thing is, is that we've heard tonight about the tax revenue figures and these revenue figures have changed. And will this be a gain from the combination of Fulton County or the city? And so I'd just like more explanation because they seem very promising. But I do ask a request of the city, um, because, uh, I would go through a list of what, and it's already been said tonight of all the expenditures that we're going to incur uh, with fire protection, police, roads, et cetera, hiring of, um, new employees. Um, I would just like to ask the, thank you.
Leanne Allen.
Leanne Allen, seventy five twenty Barnes Road. Thank you all for letting us speak tonight. I'm speaking on behalf of my father Billy Schultz, a longtime resident. As I'm trying to maintain his favorite child status as he's on a vacation. For over twenty years ago, my dad, um, he attended a meeting with Stephen Nigret prior to the building of Saran B with the idea that we should keep South Fulton rural. At that meeting, Billy suggested that we would keep a sewer out of South Fulton. Now we have a sewer serving the eastern portion of Chattahoochee Hills and they are proposing one on the west side for the studio. My dad has been in real estate and development for over fifty years. And he will tell you that a sewer is the lifeline for development. Where the sewer comes, the development will follow. Last year, the council changed the zoning from one house per five acres to one house per twenty acres. But yet a movie studio is allowed to be built roughly the size of sixteen Walmarts. Next, we are trying to protect a small area of land and according to Billy, this is the biggest case of spot zoning he has ever seen. To put a three point five million square foot building in the middle of a residential and rural area is not right. We're taking that and we're adding parking lots, roads, retention ponds, lightings. We're going to have to clear cut mass grading even bigger for water runoff to allow for all the room for what they're asking for. These massive buildings are going to require level ground and there will be millions of cubic yard of dirt moves and trees destroyed forever. In closing, Billy would like to say that we appreciate your time and service and there's a simple solution. Just vote no. Those are my dad's concrete reasons. But I would like to quickly appeal to you as a mother of three small children. What is the legacy we want to leave our children? Do we want to leave them land to run in, animals to discover and fresh air to breathe? Or do we want to leave them Hollywood and their values that will surely infect this place? Thank you.
Scott Keith. Scott Keith.
Hey, everybody. Hey, I'm Scott Keith. I'm a seven four thirty five Rico Road. See, some of my future neighbors here, um, uh, other people that I know. And, um, I just wanted to, to kind of explain something, you know? I went through Pennsylvania and I drive up Shenandoah Valley and you get to Pennsylvania and gosh, it's just nice and crisp air there, Carlisle, Hershey, all that stuff. So whoever was talking about that, I do love your state. It's great, but we're in Chat Hills. Crime, we're talking about an impact. Someone had mentioned crime inside these facilities. I don't think there's going to be crime inside them. They're secured with armed guards. Lots of people, um, talking about crime on the outside. We're talking about people driving and delivering stuff. Um, whatever it is, taking a look, hey, there's four by four sitting over there. Come by there and take that's what people do. They look around and they see stuff and there's going to be a lot of people that we don't know that don't live around here. Um, and, uh, yeah, they might have a job, uh, but they might just pick up the phone and call somebody and tell them, hey, I saw this over there. Why don't you go get it? Cause we're going to take it to Alabama and sell it. Uh, so I'm concerned about that. Chief said, police calls are up hundred and ten percent. Is that gonna get any better? I just don't think that it will. So anyway, that's that. But here's what I want to say about the applicant. All right. All I can gather is from Albany, Georgia. Albany, Georgia. Okay. Um, opportunity zone. You want, you want to go down there and you want to eliminate generational poverty. Generational poverty. I don't really think that's kind of applicable here. So whatever happened down there? I know we've tried to find out what happened down there. But London Dairy was bust, of course, someone mentioned that, but we, we don't really know. We don't really know what happened down there at all. Period. Um, so now we're not trying to eliminate generational poverty. What we're trying to do now is conserve trees and.
Got thirty seconds.
Okay. Well, let me, let me go a little faster. So, um, Republican operative, uh, now a conservationist who wants to preserve our land. Who is this person? West Hollywood, lives in West Hollywood, from Knoxville, UGA grad, nothing wrong with that. I don't guess. Uh, small city, largest ever created and applicant has never, ever done anything like this. I implore the council to be very cautious and table this. Thanks for your time. Appreciate what all y'all do.
Scott Schaefer. See, Scott Schaefer, ninety nine oh five Rivertown Road, um, district one. I, you know, I listened, I had that some remarks put up, but I listened to the last four folks and they really said all I wanted to say and a lot of different things. So I'll just kind of summarize some things that in, in the end, I'm neither for nor against it right now, but well, what I do think is that I think it's half baked. I think I've seen a lot of things coming in, uh, as far as zoning and, uh, opening doors, putting out the welcome. uh, opening doors, putting out the welcome mat for this particular project, which way exceeded what I saw counsel, uh, under their vice of their attorney, as is when we were trying to go maybe to Coweta County, there was absolutely nothing said about in support of. And I think that there's just been a huge welcome mat laid out for this project, and I think it's half-baked. I look at Murpa studies, that, that has a thirty-five foot maximum for buildings in the floodplain. It's not two thousand feet. It's anything in the floodplain, Laurie. So I hear what you're saying, and you're wrong. So when, I don't think that that's been overlaid with the site plan. So I think Murpa's a, a thing that you need to understand. If you don't understand that, Ruby, you should. And Richie, you too, every one of you should understand and have read all the details on this for you to vote going forward. I, I'm not forward or against it right now, but I just, I just see the traffic studies. I see a road traffic study just last week, the school closes, all the traffic stops, and you do a traffic study. Doesn't make a lot of sense. You know, and, and as far as, you know, keep it rural, that's what we started this, this whole town about. I appreciate what Serenby is, but they're what they are. I'm the guy that sat on a tractor for eight hours today, and my ass hurts from it. Okay? So I, I am, I understand what keep it rural means. I understand what this project is trying to do, and I appreciate that. But I don't understand some comments that I heard from the applicant that none of these zoning changes were, were influencing what they did. Um, they needed the zoning to be changed to allow these eighty-foot monstrosity buildings to be built in our small area town. So it just, it doesn't seem to be a good fit, but it might be, but, but I think you got to explore what's the benefits? And what are we getting out of it? And I don't, I don't see that we've really explored all that extremely well yet. Richard Davenport.
Hello, my name is Richard Davenport. We live at eighty-one twenty Jones Ferry Road with my wife, Jan. Good evening to the mayor, the council, citizens of Chat Hills. Um, in the meeting, I questioned the traffic report, the study that was done to address potential traffic increases. Can you speak in your microphone? In the April eighteenth meeting, I questioned the traffic study that was done to address potential increases in traffic between Jones Ferry Road and Hutchinson Ferry. Not going toward the development, but away from the development. The potential increase in traffic was not adequately addressed in the study. In fact, it's barely mentioned for that portion of the road. And the answer that I got during that meeting was that the people doing the study had determined that the increase in traffic would be insignificant. I believe that's incorrect. I moved here two years ago. I previously lived in Fayetteville, just off of Sandy Creek Road. And I saw the increase in traffic both from the construction and from the actual movies that Pinewood Studios that became Trilith brought to that area. And I would expect that that large increase in traffic will happen here. The study had said that most of the traffic will go over to the Parkway and up to Atlanta. Many people in the meeting, and I agree that that's not the only place that it will go, because most of us that live here will often be directed by our apps or other devices to actually take Hutchinson Ferry to Collingsworth to go up to eighty-five, even if you are going to Atlanta. Besides that, many of the people that we say would likely work here will come from Fayetteville and Nuneau and other areas, and will come in on that particular route. So I just believe that the assumption that there'll be minimal traffic impact to Hutchinson Ferry and potentially Jones Ferry or Hamilton is incorrect. I don't believe that the traffic has been adequately planned. A proactive plan should be put in place to address this if the project goes through, rather than waiting for there to be a problem and then addressing it later. So I would ask that you deal with the traffic issues if this is approved prior to them developing and us having to deal with it later. Thank you very much for your time.
Jennifer Astrap does not wish to speak, and she's opposed to the project, but she commented that she owns a horse sanctuary. Rodney Kelso does not wish to speak, but he's opposed to the, uh, zoning. Debbie Kelso does not wish to speak, but indicated that she is opposed. Uh, last, we have Dennis Shelton.
Hello, I'm Dennis Shelton, live at one oh eight two five Hamilton Redwine Road. And I just have one question. I was been sitting here listening, and people keep talking about it's going to bring jobs. Well, I was just wondering, is Kane Studio going to have a job there for the people that live in Chat Hills? You know, I know you have to be in the union, so will a jo- a, a union rep be here too? That was my question. And another thing, I, I was talking to a business associate of mine. He's also, uh, on the city council in Fayetteville, and I told him they were building a studio, talking about it. And he said, be careful, because movie people don't think like we do. And that's all I got to say.
Mayor, now, do we did receive three emails, which I was contacted by a citizen asking if they could email comments, which we've taken them in the past. So, or, okay.
All right, fir- first emails from Stephanie Prince from thirteen zero one five Hamilton Road. She is opposed to the movie studio.
That's Stephanie.
Stephanie Prince. Oh, sorry. Next email, this is from Leanne Allen, who is sending the email on behalf of Matt Schultz, who is currently visiting Japan. She
Excuse me, but she spoke already, so does that count?
Okay, all right. So on behalf of Matt Schultz, it says, I oppose Project Rosebud Movie Studio. As we enter into the final meeting regarding the proposed movie studio in our community, I would like to make one final appeal, uh, considering the unintended ramifications of this project on our unique community. The decision makers are well acquainted with all the statistical information and data that offer short-term gains for the community in terms of financial capital. No doubt, the influx of tax revenue will assist the maintenance of our community in some ways. I also concede that receiving tax revenue from the studios is by far a better alternative to relying on large-scale housing development to provide a financial boon, which will undoubtedly go against our keep it rural mantra. However, I would like to request that the council continue to evaluate the long-term effects of this massive project on our community's identity. Chattahoochee Hills remains one of the last remaining undeveloped areas around greater Atlanta. There are many who say that development of these areas is inevitable, and that this project will curb that development. Our refute that point. The city of Chattahoochee Hills was incorporated for the very purpose of protecting our way of life and preventing urban development of this area. As I see it, there is not a need for this development that occurs at all since our incorporation. We made our long-term intentions clear to our neighbors. Simply put, if the people of Chattahoochee Hills desire to remain rural, then we should remain rural. Those who support this proposal have ta- have talked themselves into claiming the need for the studio when it is far more of a want for those who are in control. Um, city officials want more tax revenue for better maintenance of our community in line with urban suburban standards, but the nature of our community dictates that we only need to maintain our area to rural standard. To be totally blunt, I anticipate that only significant change from increased tax revenue will be a bloated local government with more employees that are not necessary for living standards that citizens of this community desire to maintain. Likewise, supporters claim that we need the studio in order to develop at our own pace when the underlying motive is want to keep up with the surrounding municipalities who have sold their community souls in order to rub elbows with movie stars and film producers. In Chattahoochee Hills, there is no need for any of this. The wants of some should not supersede the need of our area to maintain its unified identity, which we agreed upon when we incorporated to preserve rural living. We are and can continue to be last-grade rural area in greater Atlanta. As you prepare to vote, I beg you to consider this final call from a large swath of your constituents. Keep it rural. Sincerely, Matt Schultz. And last email is from Serena Mace, who indicated that she opposes this project. Oh, okay.
All right, so, Carl, are there any other points you'd like to make before we close the air?
Thank you. I will, I'll go in reverse order if you don't mind. There were a couple of comments at the end about traffic and the river. Uh, and I want to remind you all, as, as you well know, that this went through the DRI process, during which Bratta and ARC told us which intersections to study. They evaluated the traffic study, and they're the ones that made the determination that, for example, there was not sufficient traffic on Hutchinson Ferry to recommend improvements. Uh, with regard to Murpa, uh, the Regional Commission does review that. Uh, Murpa establishes a two thousand foot corridor from the riverbank. Uh, floodplain is, is handled differently, but it has been through that review. With regard to the sixty-two acres that were removed, they were removed simply because there was nothing shown on them. There's no reason to keep, to, to add it into the, to the use permit for all the other uses. Uh, it will allow creation of TDRs there. If somebody wants to buy it for softball field, I, I think I'm happy to give them my number. In terms of whether we have been responsive, I think we have, we have certainly tried to be very responsive. And I think that the best indication of that is the number of conditions that you've got, uh, which, as I mentioned earlier, I think specifically address most of the concerns that have been brought up. There was a question about, um, the fire chief and response. I believe that the chief responded to that at an earlier meeting as to how you handle the existing movies that you have on the Buchard property, just for example. Again, I'm not going to address the procedural issues that were brought up with your amendment to the code, other than to say again that that was not necessary to allow this, uh, project to move forward under your, under your ordinance. There was a comment that, uh, well, there was a comment about a helipad. I introduced, I said that before. She read quite a few emails, but didn't quite get to the one where I said, we're not going to do it. We don't need it. Uh, it was an inquiry that I made of Mr. Morton to say if we did want one, what procedurally would we have to do? We haven't filed for it. It's obviously not in the plan. It's not on the site plan. We can't do it. Uh, we don't need sixteen hundred acres. Well, that's could be a two-edged sword. No, you don't. But the fact that we've got sixteen hundred acres allows the preservation of land and the screening of these facilities from off-site property. So that's exactly the benefit of doing it on that large, a, a track. Uh, there was a comment, uh, about this being a large industrial project. I think that's a bit of a pejorative term. Uh, right now, the city is, as you all know, surrounded by industrial projects, whether it been Union City or, or Douglas County or wherever. You're getting all the impact of that, but you're not getting any of the benefit of it. This is quite simply not, uh, an Amazon fulfillment center or, or whatever, uh, the analogy was. I think that addresses most of the opposition. Again, I appreciate the, the help that we've gotten from the staff. Uh, I, I think it's been, we have certainly tried to be cooperative. I, I, um, I did, there was a question that I think Ms. Seymour brought up. Uh, we, we actually met with her on the property. Uh, we are aware of those conditions. We will try to address them as development moves forward. Uh, and we would do the same thing for anybody else that comes up with a specific, uh, condition. But again, we have a condition that says we'll work in good faith with the city. Uh, if, if other, uh, issues become apparent, um, thanks for your consideration. I think we have addressed this about as thoroughly as we can over the last several months. Thank you.
And Carl, does anybody up here have any questions for Carl or staff? And, and then I'll give it a day time to if you want to make some comment. No, all right. Um, so, man, everybody. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead and close the public here. Sorry.
Yeah, Mayor, I honestly think that, uh, from, from listening to these comments, and it is true that early on, I actually thought this would be a great idea, looking at it in a cursory fashion. But after listening to my neighbors and, and looking at some of what's going to take place around us and the large impact it's going to have. I understand the narrative that's been put out there that, that we could have a lot worse, and we quite possibly would. But, uh, there's too many questions about this thing. And, uh, and there's been a lot of selling points that's been brought up that we do need to address. We don't need to go at this at breakneck speed, and I know people that work in these veins of work, especially lawyers and, and other people that represent this type of, uh, project. Uh, would like to see it move a lot faster, but, um, personally, I, I don't believe we have any need to move in this fashion this quickly. Uh, there's a lot of things that's been brought up. We would be, um, we would not only be remiss if, if we moved on this now, we would be derelict in, in not addressing a lot of these concerns. There are very, very valid concerns on the floor. I would love to see a motion to table this thing for a little while, and, and at least have some more time to address this as council. There's a lot of questions that came up. Uh, that's where I sit.
So, you know, I was kind of looking back on this project and the discussion we had, and I know that our very first public meeting was actually July seventh of last year. So almost a year ago, we started discussing Kane Studio, and Patrick, um, Millsaps was able to took questions and discussed the original project, and I know it's been changed a little. We, in my mind, we can have a great balance that no other cities around us right now can have. They aren't zoned for it. Like many people have said, we're impacted by that and will be, continue to be. I'm originally from Macon, Georgia. They have totally clear-cut graded, parceled out subdivisions all around, down seventy-five, off seventy-five into Warner Robinson, Macon. One after the other, huge distribution centers, transfer stations, and I can tell you, they have little to no rules. There are little to any protections. And that's most of Georgia. We have heard from folks that are for and against, and I appreciate the emails for those of you that have taken the time to put those together, um, and the conversations. And I know that we can't, with a project of this scope, and it's one of our, the first I've been involved in with the city, it is hard to answer and get every single detail down to the, but I do appreciate the condition where we can have further discussions when something, um, may impact a person, property, um, or the city. We insist on quality, and they have worked with us, I feel like, to deliver that. We have seven pages of conditions that meticulously have been through, um, I know by staff, the mayor, council. And I believe the studio will bring tangible benefits to the area without us even having to give them taxes and symptoms to do it. I think this project preserves land and improves our revenues, all within our zoning. That's how I feel. Thank you.
Yes, I feel like I've been living through this project for a lifetime. Uh, it did start last year, got pulled, but while it's been pulled, we've still been studying, still been working. The thought that some residents would request that we table it for a while. What you haven't seen behind the scenes is council members attending the work sessions and discussing this, going to planning commission meetings, listening to the planning commission members, meeting with the applicants, meeting with the applicants, meeting with the residents who had concerns. Um, and constant emails and phone calls to address concerns. And constant emails and phone calls to address concerns. And what it seems to me like with the concerns. Yes, there's many valid concerns. Will we ever have enough information about it? Do I know what their plans are for education, for bringing in people, for getting their financing? I'm reminded of something one of the planning commissioner members said to a different applicant at the last meeting. He wanted to address additional concerns. He said, sir. We can only address what's in the printed application. That's what we've got to go by. If there was an email that talked about a potential helipad, if it's not in the application, we don't address it. The application does not require background checks. It doesn't require us to check their financial liability. None of that is relevant. What is relevant is, does it meet the criteria of our zoning? And what I can tell, working with the staff and the attorney, it looks like it does. I think the applicant has demonstrated that they intend to be a good neighbor and a partner with the city. In the way that they've bent over backwards, even though we don't have impact fees to show and realize that this will have an impact on our community. And they've offered quite a bit of. To compensate the city for the impact that's required. I haven't done a cost analysis. If we did have impact fees, what that cost would be versus what we're getting. By asking them not to build on seventy percent of their land, which I had it written down, but it's somewhere like eleven hundred acres. And I think, oh my gosh, I only have five acres. If someone came along and said, oh, how would you feel about that, not building on, you know, seventy percent of your five acres? Do you live in the rural district and you're a residential property owner? There is no requirement for preservation. We put that all on our developers. That is one of our impacts. We're asking them. That's the commitment that developers make who want to come and build out in Chattahoochee Hills. That may be one reason why we haven't had any takers so far. Got lots of large landowners just sitting on their pretty property. It's a hardship that we don't list as a hardship, we list as a benefit. But, oh my gosh, if I could afford to have by sixteen hundred acres and then couldn't build on eleven hundred acres, that would be, that would seem like hardship to me. But they don't see it that way. They see it as being a part of this community and a part of this community's vision. To make that preservation possible. They don't have plans at this moment to put that preservation offsite, but I hope they do. Because if they do, instead of doing a one-for-one acre, we have three point, would you say, three point three acres? If they preserve offsite, we don't have that in the rural district right now. If you come to council meetings, you've heard me say, my wish list is that we would have a rural safe zone. Where I know where I live in the rural community, I can feel safe that no one's going to build out in the property next to me. And I sort of looked at a way to do that for a zoning, brought that up to the mayor, brought that up to Mike Morton. What can we do to do that? That's just not fair. We're RL. We should be able to just do agriculture and residential out here. And then the thought being, but that's. With property rights, not fair to the person who owns a hundred acres and wants to sell it or wants to develop it, to tell them, no, they can't. Anyway, so when we don't agree with our zoning. The avenue for that is to attempt to change it, not when there's an application active for it. To find fault with it. That's not the time. We tried to do that with the Rock Corrigan in Whitesburg. And this Georgia Supreme Court reversed that decision. All that to say, I feel a huge responsibility to the city. To developers, to all land property owners, to treat these applications fairly. And the only way I know how to do that is to make sure that it aligns up with our zoning. To do all the study and due diligence I can. Personally, I don't feel like I can do anymore. Do I still have some questions? And yes, thank you for adding that one last condition. That if things come up we haven't thought about, they'll work through it. Who else does that? Just to say, oh, you know, you have this concern, let us just keep adding these things. That's why there's five and a half pages of. Conditions. Anyway, I'm very pleased with the way this has gone, with the amount of community input that's been given, with the careful thought and research for those who support it and those who don't. And if those who don't support the zoning. I would invite you to contact Mary when we are planning to have a comp plan update. I think it's in another two years, maybe. And has to serve on that committee. If there's things you want changed, that's the avenue, because the comp plan guides the zoning. And anyway, I appreciate your, your input and your attendance tonight. Thanks to the applicant and staff.
Yeah, guys, first of all, everybody came out, I think, with the ear. Both sides of everything. You know, when we became a city, the idea was at some point we would have possibly three large developments. We had other restrictions in place to prevent having ten or fifteen. My concern right now is having ten or fifteen. We have one right now in Saratoga. Do I like the idea of a movie studio? They can fix the zoning. Do I want it in my backyard? That answered me, no. I have a big problem with the, the traffic issue. You were here at that meeting, they presented their things, people were asking us questions. Very confused. Called Carl over there to my desk and gave him the answer. People were asking, chose not to answer the skill, so I actually shared it with the song. I find it hard to believe that forty-six hundred cars with two long roads, it's not going to create a cluster this time. Create a detour for ten years. I know last night, that awful wreck. It's funny, I came home to Douglasville. The wreck had just happened. Turned around, went and took care of a buddy of mine's house, and it was out of town. Stayed there with his kid a couple hours, hung up the ball, chilled out. Came back, wreck still go. Had to wind up taking a fifteen-mile detour to get home. That's just one ask. What we don't have, we have some sheets of paper. From Greta Traffic Studies, whatever. What we don't have is we don't have any time. We don't know when these roundabouts are getting put in. We don't know anything. What we know is the day you start without all these answers. You're, you're just sitting there waiting for a detour. That's been my biggest fear. You know, I, I think they're talking four or five roundabouts. You want to do this whole project in one big swoop. You talk about studios, they are kind of everywhere. Douglasville has them, Union City has them, Bay of Bill has them. You got a big enough piece of property, you can buy it. In our town, you can use it. Especially use permanent or whatever. You can apply for whatever in any town, depending on their zone. Our zoning does fit this. You'd be sued if you didn't. The zoning has been changed to accommodate certain things. What people do with their land, I'm a big fan of. Property rights. And I want my back. One house per twenty acres. I want my back. That's what I want. That's what I want to see this council start to discuss. Telling me what I can, can't do. Anyway, what I would like to see is some people from Greta. I'd like to see some people from the DOT. I'd like to see somebody, because obviously the documents that he received were highly questioned. Actually, they were told they would probably be cut in half. The amount of traffic. When I read through this, it's very simple to me. I don't know what kind of a cars college brings. Know what a hotel does, know how high it is. That's a lot going on, guys. Yeah, we've been talking about this for a year and a half or whatever. Truth is, the application, the old one was tossed out, gone. You've been dealing with this since January. That's when you've been dealing with this current application, since January. You know, it's. I just hate to see, I, I foresee a huge inconvenience for all of us for years to come. Unless these roads are addressed. I found that out last night. God rest that guy's soul. Over one traffic incident. Two and a half hours later, I still had to go fifteen miles that way to get home. And, you know, and there should be a traffic light there. I'm just saying, these safety procedures have to, but we should have a timeline. You're going to come into my town, bulldoze half of it, reconstruct it, or whatever you're going to do. You know, I need a way to get home. You know, and these things, these, these things need to be done. We should know. I want this thing built out in phases. Every one of the current studios that are built, including Triller, is built out in phases. You live in a town that doesn't have code for you. I don't know who on God's green earth, other than the safety company is going to go out there. Do the checks and balances. I don't know. You ever been in Mike's office? Raise your hand. He's got eight hundred and thirty tubes on his office. Know how he's going to deal with this. You know, and, and I'll get back to your question's name. We're told five million, maybe five point nine. Is that right, Carl? That's the city share after it's all built out, so on five years. So that's what we're projecting. You know, if you want to know what, I, I don't know. And I'll tell you why, because what I do know is that whenever there is a police incident or anything, it takes one of our officers off the road, sometimes too. You got to run somebody. What I, what I know also is our revenue, every year, your property goes up. Probably ticks up about ten percent overall for the city, I would imagine, without looking at my sheet of paper. And what I do know is there are currently a ton of things that are permitted. Mike just talked about building out that neighborhood from LA. Got a big patch up there on the. Well, there's patches all over the city. Bottom line is, revenue is not going to slow down. Is it nice to have that revenue? It sure is. But I side with the gentleman who said, at what cost? I'd imagine after everything we're involved, I'd hate to see Daryl, he's a part-time employee at the park now. But that's, I mean, not being funny, I'm just saying, that's the type of. What do you call hours that park requires now? Everybody that goes there, it's, it's crazy to keep that park in the condition he does. I know what's going to happen. We are going to need some more employees and. You know, I'm also a big fan of getting our receivables upfront. You know, I don't really like promises from developers. We're, we just fixed up one neighborhood, now we're going to clean up the other one. Because the developer came in with money. I do think that, yeah, you're not required to do a background. Thing or dealing with people's financials, but I do think a project of this magnitude, size of sixteen freaking Walmarts. You know what? I, I would like to verify a little something somewhere, and I'm sure, I'm sure our lawyer can find some way to figure out if that's possible or not. I recommend. Highly tabling this thing for at least sixty days. Until these things are worked out. I'm not against the studio. I'm against the poor planning of what it could happen to our citizens, if that makes sense. Not talking about your poor planning. I'm talking about on the side of, of the roads. This is, this is my, this is where I live. I'm not looking to be inconvenienced because somebody wants to do something. I'm not looking to have to come up here three years from now and dump a quarter of a million dollars into a one-mile stretch of road that's been just destroyed. You know, I would like to see some conversations on that. We've already done that in Atlanta, I think a million dollars on one big. Stretch or something, digging it up. What, these people get paid to pave roads is retarded. But we know the outcome. You run that many trucks on it, you're going to destroy it. You don't have to be a genius to figure that out. And, and two, I mean, people are correct. They are correct. There's two sides of living in this town. You know, if you live in a village or a hamlet, that's on you. The rest of us operate by a different set of rules. When I hear people sit up here, tell me they're off of property owner rights, and you're sitting on one house per twenty acres, that ain't what they for. You got an election coming in November, guys. I suggest you pay attention. With that, go dogs.
Good evening, and I want to say thanks to everyone who came out. I did listen to your concerns. But I also want to say that we have had a lot of opportunity to bring all, not all, most of these questions before us. Or to be able to maybe email one of us or either the lawyer about some of these concerns. And every time we come, we come with different concerns, and I understand that. Because I live off Cascade, I'm at a highway, and right across the street from my, me, if you come down the street, they're tearing trees down. I have, I can't do anything about that. Because they're getting ready to put a complex across the street. And I don't like that, but I actually made sure I had my input into the situation as well. Kane Studio, as you said, we're good faced. If this passes, I will hope that you will be in good faith with that. And the things that the citizen is still concerned about, I hope that you address that as well. I just want to say thanks to everyone.
Ruby brings up a good point. Six hundred homes on two hundred acres across the street from her with no buffers. Will create more traffic impact than the studio is, or maybe a tenth of the tax revenue, just to say, this is what's happening everywhere around us. And, and I want to make a point, too. The, the, the changing the channel analogy is actually a great one. Because that's not what's happening here. What's happening here is that you've been seeing ads for the show that's coming on at eight o'clock. The whole day you've been watching on this channel. Maybe you didn't notice, I don't know, but the channel's the same. This zoning, the theory behind this zoning has been in place before the city became a city. The seventy percent preservation and thirty percent development has been a part of this before we became a city. When we voted to become a city, the paperwork we were sending out to people, talking about the financial implications of becoming a city and all that, had that in it. I know, because I wrote some of it. It's, it's been the message from the beginning. The way that you pay for the preservation is by having the development, right? That's just a fact. And, and again, we've had so many public processes and people that have been involved in comp plan updates. Our first one. Four hundred, four hundred households from this community participated in our first one. Highest level of participation anywhere in the country that I've been able to find. So again, I, I get it. Like, if you've moved here since then, maybe all you've heard is keep it rural and you just didn't dig in to find out what that meant. That it means something other than just nothing's going to change, right? The way to make nothing change, there's an easy way to do it, actually, right? Our transfer development rights program makes it pretty clear how you do it. So let me come up with three or four hundred million dollars so that we can buy all the development rights here. We can put those all aside and preserve the whole city. Right? That's how that works. That's like making it a park. And nobody's going to sell you their land for free to be a park, right? You have to have a way to make that happen, and that's what our whole program does. The development that comes pays the people who don't develop to not develop. You get to participate in the upside of this thing while we're protecting seventy percent of the community in what's basically its current form, right? And that thoughtful process has been in place for twenty-plus years. There have been small detail changes around it for sure, right? We've had experts in from around the country to tune it, to tune it, to make it better, to make it more thoughtful. To make it more about developments that are higher revenue, lower impact, that sort of thing. But the basic concept has never changed. We're on the same channel, and that's what's memorialized in our zoning, and that's what we're doing right now. And to be clear, it's something that nobody else has been able to do, right? I mean, you go to a place like this around Atlanta, this far out around Atlanta, in any direction, you will not find something like Chattahoochee Hills. You won't. You go past us into Kuwaita, you don't find it, right? And the reality is that in all of those places, every large lot's being turned into subdivisions as the two million more people move in over the course of the next twenty years. Right? Chattahoochee Hills, a hundred years from now, seventy percent of the community is going to look just like it does now, is the hope. That's the plan. That's what we're working toward. Right? Are there going to be impacts? Of course there are. You can't turn, you can't get across the parkway right now. That's not because of anything that's happened in Chattahoochee Hills. That stuff that's happening outside of us that has huge impacts here, that we don't have the ability to do anything about. You want to double the size of the police department? I'd like to. Costs about a million bucks a year. Want to double size the fire department? I'd like to. About a million bucks a year, right? I mean, it's, it's easy math, and, and that's just how these things work. The, the fact is that we do have a plan, and it's a good plan. And I appreciate all the work that's gone into this project. People that have come to all the meetings and had all these conversations, asked their questions. I appreciate all of your questions, because we followed up on a lot of those questions. There was a serious question about lighting, right? And we added a condition that made sure that they understood that they had to follow our dark, our dark sky ordinance, that there was no relief from that from a movie studio. Which basically makes it impossible to do outside filming at night with bright lights. That's our ordinance, right? That's our ordinance, right? We've clarified all those things. We've got twenty conditions. Been an incredibly thoughtful process, and, and I think you don't give enough credit to the people that have come to all of those meetings for the work that they've done by pretending it's not the case. There was a, a particular point too that somebody brought up about one of our ordinances not being done properly because it wasn't read twice. Uh, in two thousand and nine, the city council changed the, uh, changed the charter, actually. Uh, went to the state and changed the charter. Uh, and that was signed by the previous mayor, Don Hayes, taking that all to a one read. So we've absolutely been following the law the whole time. They realized that that made it too hard to get things done. It took too long. So that's another thing. I just would caution people about finding some little tidbit somewhere and having their aha moment. You know, the bridge didn't fall down. We're not breaking the law. We are following our rules here and trying to protect this city the best we can. And a- again, I, I appreciate everybody who, who leans into that and understands that. And that's all I've got. So the next thing would be, uh, you know, we can take a, a motion to adopt. We can take a motion to table if you want.
This is gonna take place.
Somebody wants to make a motion.
Make a motion.
But we will vote on that right away too.
I'd like to mo- make a motion to adopt item twenty-three.
We're gonna, we're gonna listen to it. We, we have a motion in a second to table it.
And was your dis-
Sorry. We had a motion from Richie and a second from Troy to table this.
And was your-
For thirty days?
I, I'd say until we hear from, um,
No, I need the number of the people that did the traffic studies.
You gotta put a date on it.
For uh, traffic around here. I'd say sixty days. I don't know how quick you can get one of these people before we count them down, okay?
Is there discussion on it?
Yeah, of course.
Um, so my discussion with that is those phases are outlined in the traffic study, clearly outlined when those things will happen. There is no need, there's no question when that will happen.
And you've been waiting on a bridge down there by your house for four years.
And it's coming this year.
I know. It's supposed to come two years ago.
Hope it delayed a lot of bridges and a lot of information.
For some reassurances and timelines from
We, we heard.
The documents that we
Let's, let's.
Questioning it is not a bad thing.
Finish what you're saying.
Um, I'm, I'm saying that we, we have that in the traffic study. That's all we can expect from the authorities in the traffic study, which is Georgia DOT, just like with my bridge. Can't hold a gun to their head and say, I want my bridge tomorrow. It is what it is. And, um, I don't see that delaying this by six months is gonna give us any different outcome that's already outlined in sixty days, sorry, in the traffic study.
To your point, we've had in-depth conversations about this, and I really do apologize for some of the folks that missed some of those meetings, but we've had plenty of opportunities to ans- ask those questions, get them answered. Uh, I'm, I'm recommending you all vote no on this one, but let's go ahead and have the vote. All those in favor of, uh, the motion, please say aye. Uh, to table, yeah, sorry, for the sixty day table, and that's what's on the table right now.
Okay. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Does not carry?
I'd like to make a motion, um, that we adopt this application with the conditions in the application and with the two new proposed conditions and the revised, the proposed new condition and the proposed revised condition.
We have a motion as our second?
Second.
What's on the floor right now is the motion to adopt twenty-three dash oh one, I'm sorry, twenty-three dash oh one five, which is the rezoning of the sixteen hundred and six acres with all of the variances and all of the conditions, including the two that were added today. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
That carries three to two. Next up is twenty-three dash oh one eight, which is a public hearing on an ordinance to adopt the budget for twenty-four.
Need a second. Will the room clear?
Budget's important too. No, I get it.
Let it clear out for a second.
We're supposed to air conditioners online? Oh, we're on. We do have the mini, what's in the. Robert, they support. Yeah, okay.
I don't think before I get closer.
I figured, cause I can't see.
I just got older. Six pounds. Yeah.
I'm not touching anything. Did you hear about that? I don't care. I don't stop them. Just like blowing out and, and I was telling them, I lost seven pounds overnight. All right, let's get going. Got one, Greg?
All right.
Robbie, if you wanna give us.
Yeah, I'm just muted. Daryl?
You got it.
Daryl?
Can you turn? Oh.
Yeah. Can you, can you cut? Can you cut the image too?
So.
There you go. Thank you.
That's okay. That's okay.
Yeah.
It's like description, we're talking about.
Yeah. You know, real quick, um, a lot of people filing out. Daryl kinda stole my thunder earlier, you know, because I'm trying to recognize, uh, folks here in the room, you know, with, with with Michelle being here a year and, and Jim leaving here in less than a month and stuff, things happening. Um, you know, I started here a little over seven years ago, and the first thing that was tasked upon me by the interim city manager, the mayor and council, and chief Brett was to find a public works director. And within thirty days, one of my favorite days in the city, I've had a lot of good days, but one of my favorite was meeting and interviewing Daryl Wenlet. And Greg and I did, and it was instant. We knew to the point that that was a Friday afternoon. I called him on the way home for two reasons. I didn't want him to go find another job over the weekend. And also I didn't want him to wait until Monday to hear from me because that's how much we wanted Daryl to be here. And he's made this city so much better. I always say no one person is bigger than the organization. That is true. Once we leave, somebody else will come in and take our place, but those are some big old shoes to fill. And we need to keep Daryl around a long time. So I just wanted to make sure I said that as part of the budget because also part of the budget, a month after he got here, he came and got half a million dollars from you guys. I was like, from now on, Daryl's presenting the budget. But all that being said. It gave people the time to file out. So I wanna recognize Daryl, but all, all that being said, um, you know, the fiscal year budget is before you for twenty twenty-four. It starts July first. Uh, this is the first public hearing for the budget. No action is required by the mayor council. The second bub- public hearing i- is, uh, we, we put out there, we published it. You haven't seen it yet, um, probably because you've, you might have been dealing with another item that just came before you. So you might not realize that the next public hearing is gonna be on a, um, it's a Wednesday at four P M. On the twenty-first of this month, we have to have it before the end of the year. We have to have two public hearings. It's a virtual only, but it's not gonna be like our sessions have been lately. It will be open to the public for those that are here, uh, for public comment because it is a public hearing. So that's on the twenty-first, July, June, um, at four P M. It's virtual only. It is, uh, I've sent out the link and it's available for Zoom, and we just have to make sure I have the mayor and at least three council members to get a quorum to get that adopted. Um, but luckily, if that were not the case, somebody were, were sick, we couldn't have it. We still have a little bit of time before the end of the month. So. I passed out for you because last, last week at the work session, I was explaining kind of the overarching image and picture of the city, and you know, it's hard for me to see, and if it's hard for me to see, I know it's hard for you to see, and that is the, uh, I did kind of a graph and a chart, but the one at the bottom is kind of what you see in, at the bottom of the statement of revenues and expenditures because we use governmental fund accounting. So we have our largest fund, which a lot of people talked about tonight, is where is money coming from to fund operations for fire and police and community development? That's your general fund. That's your operational fund. Of course, you have all your other funds, like your grants and your T S B L S and your capital fund and your hotel motel, and those are all other funds. That's what's listed what in front of you now today. So you have in there your F Y twenty-three amended budget. Then you also at the bottom of it, I'm, I'm referring to the table, you also have the recommended budget. And I wanted to point out, I added a new column that's called the, the year-to-date revenues because that paints a better picture because it, it doesn't show such a large leap. Because when we budget, you know, we were very conservative in our budget. So we say, for instance, in our general fund, year-to-date revenue is four point nine million in the general fund. We're recommending four point five million, you know, so we just, we, we recognize that we're trying to be very conservative in, in that, and, and that means that across the board in departments, we're making sure that we make the cuts that we need to make and, uh, we can operate accordingly. And going down the line, you got debt service. Debt service is going up a little bit because we, we absorbed, uh, uh, another fire truck. So that went up a little bit, but what comes off this year is still part of the fiscal year. We gotta pay another payment this year is, is the those payments on the, uh, equipment that I was talking about that Daryl purchased, that goes away. So that's how long Daryl's been here. We've paid off all his equipment. I know. It's great. It's a good feeling. Think about it. When you pay off a car or a house or something, something like that, it's good feeling, right? And that's what we're doing. Uh, hotel motel, uh, fund, you know, very conservative with that. We've got, uh, forty-three point seven five percent of that, of course, is gonna go to our new C V B in that area. Technology fund, what that is, and you see a kind of a disparity of what we collect and, and what we project. That's a real hard one to, to, to pick. That's in courts because every time somebody pays a citation, uh, there's a technology fund fee attached to that, and that has to be go to spend on public safety related expenses. Uh, you can't, I can't use it myself, and, and Dana can't use it. It has to be going to, unless it goes towards somewhere to help court operations or police operations. And then we get into grants. The biggest, the reason why the, the budget looks the way it does is because the ARPA money, you know, the grants that we got in, we got that one point two million in, and we are spending that ARPA money. We're using it for other purposes because it's been released more now. And you might hear about some people talking, and it's misinformation, by the way, about what's going on with the deficit ceiling and the clawing back of the money. They're not clawing back the ARPA money, okay? That's ours. Okay, it's not going anywhere, and that's gonna be used for funds. In fact, we talked about, uh, you're talking about the air conditioning tonight. This would qualify for, for the, to finish out. We got most of the equipment. We need to do air in here. We just gotta finish it out so we can use ARPA money, but most of the time we try to use it for, for public safety purchases, uh, air tanks for the fire department. If they need new, uh, uh, apparatus type of stuff, we use that. Then we get into capital equipment, and, and there's a whole separate capital budget in there, and there's some specific things like police cars. Uh, but there's also some gen- general things like, all right, we're gonna put five hundred thousand dollars in the roads. Those, those kind of things. So that's in your, your capital. Again, some are itemized, some are not. If it's, even if it's, and we've talked about this, even if it's itemized, like it's a vehicle, we still come to the council. We still bring it to you because of, you know, our financial policies. We will make sure we're very transparent with that and very, we, a lot of, uh, a lot of the costs have gone up in vehicles, as Chief Little will tell you. Uh, when he goes out to get a vehicle, he, you know, at one point there were thirty-four thousand dollars, then to forty-two thousand dollars, then to forty-eight thousand dollars. It's just, they keep creeping up, so we do what we can. Um, and then, uh, T S B L S, T S B L S, uh, Daryl talked about it earlier. Uh, we're kicking that off. You know, we've been pushing hard to get this advertised because we want it before you July eleventh. Okay? It will not, as Daryl mentioned, it will not be in your packet. Okay? The information will not be in your package. We don't open the bids until July tenth. But I don't care because I want it before you on July eleventh for you to have consideration because we need to get ahead of this, and we're gonna take care of a lot of roads. I'm not gonna give the number, what we, we've talked about it, but again, now that the bid's out, you know, that's up to the bidders out there to give us a good number, not for me to help them out. And then we get into the reserves. The reserves are there. All these numbers, particularly in the reserves, those are going to change. We're going to make sure that whatever we don't put in the budget goes into reserves. I'm not changing revenues. If something were to happen, some, something came down the pipe between now and the twenty-first, when you hear the second public hearing, and I'm like, oh, we're forty thousand dollar behind. Oh, we're fifty, whatever. I'm not gonna go, hmm, let me go kick up revenues a little bit here to cover that. No, that's not what the mayor and I do. We go, where can we cut to address this issue? So the next budget you see is gonna be similar to this, but as Michelle, my finance director there knows, we've had more expenditures that are gonna come in before the end of this month. We have more revenues, not a lot, that are gonna come in, but we're gonna get as close as we can to what we think our fund balance is on the twenty-first and present that to you. So all that being said, I've got a lot more information on the budget. You've got a lot of headed you tonight. We still have the public hearing between now and the twenty-first. I can answer questions. This information's gonna be available on the website for the public because it has to be for public review, and that's what this is about. But I'll be happy to entertain any questions. I kinda gave a really, really high level view, but you guys have heard a lot tonight. I know you're, you're, you're pretty tired, and I'd be glad to, to address this now, later, tomorrow, um, or between now and the twenty-first, uh, in person, over the phone, email, whatever you need. I'm happy to help. That goes for citizens too. Okay.
All right, so we go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have any comments to this? In which case, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to the next item. Which is twenty-three dash oh one two, which is the, uh, special use permit. And based on our conversation at the work session, what I'd like to do is request a motion from city council to allow withdrawal of the application without prejudice as he goes out and works with his neighbors to come back to us with something perhaps better. So could I get that motion, please?
Make a motion to withdraw. Say.
Uh, without prejudice.
Without prejudice, twenty-three oh two.
Great. Perfect. Thanks. Uh, any discussion about that? If not, all those in favor of adopting that withdrawal, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? That, uh, stands approved, I guess, is what we would say. Stands withdrawn. Uh, next up is twenty-three dash oh one nine, which is the, uh, change of the qualifying fees, Dana?
No.
No.
Can you hear me now? Um, so we adopted in, I believe it was January or at the February meeting, we adopted our qualifying, uh, fees, which are based on, on the salaries at three percent of the salary. That's by state law. And we adopted those fees based on the new salaries that will take, uh, place for these council seats, um, with this election. And, uh, discovered recently that the law actually reads it needs to be based on the preceding year. So, um, we will be reducing those. We had set them at a hundred and eight dollars. This resolution will reduce them to thirty-six dollars.
All right, uh, can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-three dash oh one nine, the corrected qualifying fees?
I make a motion to adopt twenty-three dash oh nine, oh one nine.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of adopting twenty-three dash oh one nine, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. That carries unanimously. Next up is twenty-three dash oh two oh, which is an ordinance to amend the zoning map on twenty-three acres from R L to H M U. This is the first read, and Mike, if you would just walk us through it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank, thank you, thank, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council for, um, uh, this is, uh, says proposal to rezone twenty twenty-three point three. From R L Rural to H M M U, mixed use Hamlet. Uh, the property is three separate lots. Um, most of it is on, uh, one property, um, known as the Simpson property, little over twenty-one acres. Um, and then there's another one acre property on, um, Watkins Road. Both of those are on Watkins Road. And then yet another one acre property way over on the other side of the, um, of the existing Hamlet district. Um, uh, on the other side of Atlanta Noonan Road is actually landlocked just beyond the end of, uh, Rock Hill Road. Um, the proposal for the property is, uh, for the large twenty-one, uh, acre parcel, uh, that the existing house would, um, would remain. And, uh, there would be a two acre lot, um, defined around that. The rest would become open space. And then, um, uh, that property is adjacent just to the south of the recently rezoned F lots. Um, and, uh, there would be a couple of new lots added there. They would be clustered with two of the other lots, so there'd be a cluster of four lots. That would be served by the existing, um, road that serves those, uh, uh, F, uh, format lots. And, um, and then the one acre parcel on Watkins Road would become, basically just become open space, part of the open space. It'd be part of the buffer also for the, uh, for the district. And then the one acres way over on the other side, um, off of Atlanta Noonan Road would be primarily open space, but part of the, um, I'm sorry, primarily buffer, but part of the, uh, art farm development. And, uh, this is just the first read. Um, we'll, we'll have a public hearing on it on the fifteenth. This coming Thursday, uh, with the planning commission, and then, of course, you all will have a public hearing at the, maybe next month with, uh, of course, analysis and recommendation. This coming Thursday, uh, with the planning commission, and then of course, you all will have a public hearing at the meeting next month with uh, of course, analysis and recommendation.
We have the applicant here and Mike, if anybody has any questions. One of the benefits of the cleanup of the little lots is that we remove the opportunity for potential new driveways, there's some benefit to it beyond just the preservation that comes with the Hamlet zoning. Uh, thank you, Mike. Next up is adjournment. Uh, can I get a motion in a second, please, to adjourn the regular meeting?
Make a motion that we adjourn the regular.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh.
I'm sorry. Mayor and council comments.
I'm sorry.
I skipped right over that, I said something, of course, yeah.
I know, um, Mr. Richardson, he had, he had read a law to us earlier today. Uh, in reference to the hearing that took place or whatever, that it's supposed to be done in public, that is correct, we need to schedule that.
I'll uh, make sure that the city attorney who made the call on that is here to explain that at the next meeting.
He just read a law to us.
Oh, right.
Citizens are supposed to have the right to speak, they need to speak.
Rick, Rick was absolutely clear that the way he set up what we did did not violate that law, but I, I don't want to explain that one.
Okay, I hear you. Okay, alrighty, um, guess I'll go first with my comments. That's okay with everybody?
Of course.
I'm just messing with you. Not crazy days, um. Anyway, I'm pretty good. I just encourage people to keep coming out, paying attention, getting involved, be aware of what's going on, um, for the last minute. And um, sad but true, stand up for what's yours. Your dogs. Before football season.
There, Ruby?
Sorry, um, just wanted to say thanks to everyone who came out. Um, I just pray for whatever decision we made tonight, that they will do it in good faith. And um, that uh, we would still stay and make sure that they do exactly what they said they was going to do. Also, just want to say, and we, Laura, uh, council chair were talking about it, we have our senior event coming up on the sixteenth. And also, we will have a Chat Hills Day at Bear Creek on August the twenty-sixth, uh, and that will be free to the community as well.
Um, yes, so tagging on to the senior event, um, uh, it's going to be a good one, we've got a, a speaker from A A R P who actually lives in the community, Ms. Jill Hines. And uh, they're sponsoring the meal and the presentation for this event, and then the, the following one after that as well. And we have a couple of other people that have asked to speak, so we're kind of excited that other speakers are coming forward. So there's someone who'd like to speak about hospice volunteer opportunities. Um, Ms. Joanna Hannah will be there to speak a few minutes about the Palmetto Independent Living Village, um, that joins the children's home. And we're looking forward to that. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is um, we created a new website for Chat Hills Community Outreach. Uh, that's a, a volunteer thing that I've done to support that group. And really excited about that, we hope to streamline the registration, and most of our registrations are free, we do this to get a head count and to know how much food to buy for the presentations. Um, and I want to thank Ruby and, and Camille for their work with the movie in Chat Hills at Rickle Park, I'll let them talk about that. But also the staff, just about everybody, who somebody was there helping out, making popcorns, thank you, appreciate all that, that's all I have.
Yeah, sure. Uh, is Chief Little still here? Oh, there you go, saw, see you over there now. Um, I just wanted to say thank you for your service. And also specifically, when we started trying to figure out how to handle things outside of Fulton County Animal Control, that you stepped in and were willing to listen, um, and we brought people, folks in from the community, and you took the time to do that and then continued to help with that program. And even would take my texts, you know, um, when we were trying to figure things out and, and, because that can be harder when anything's new. So really thank you a lot, and um, I know Florida will treat you right with your hobby. Um, also, Daryl, I know Laurie just mentioned the movie, and I know, you know, rain or shine, you're out there always. And we never knew that morning what was going to happen, and you had everything looking perfectly. And of course, uh, Chief Brett, I know you, I see you back there and you're looking down, but I know you did a ton too. And I appreciate y'all for all your help. That's what I've got.
Thank you, Troy.
Yeah, absolutely, I want to say, I know I sound like a broken record, but I, I am very encouraged by the amount of people that are involved, and I think much of that um, is, is because of the uh, uh, citizens alliance and the organization that is providing, and I just want to do a big shout out to them. Keep it up, um, that, that is what's necessary in order for this to participate, it needs to be a dialogue and a conversation that happens in forums like this uh, all the time. Uh, and then it is, you know, it may get contentious, it may uh, it may stir up emotions and everything else, but that's, that's what a, you know, a democratic process is all about. Uh, I'm uh, deeply encouraged by all of that, uh, you know, I think uh, when I grew up uh, here in the seventies and uh, the eighties, and I'm probably not grown up yet, uh, so um, uh, it, it was a lot of lethargy as far as uh, people being involved, uh, and the uh, injection of people down here that's just moved in, that are new around us, uh, is causing us to, to have to be involved. Uh, I appreciate each and every one of you uh, for that, um, uh, and, and your, your zeal to pursue truth and, and pursue um, uh, of being involved in, in a very constructive way, uh, each and every one of you, and, and Chief Little, uh, I hate to see you go, I really do. Um, I didn't get a chance to know you as well as I, I would have liked to have. Um, but uh, whenever I did, man, you did have our talks, I, I enjoyed it thoroughly. And I, I believe that uh, you know, you, you've done everything you could, and uh, I wish you well on your endeavor, I, I guess, you know, when I, I, I will, I will be extra cautious when I see older guys riding mountain bikes uh, by me.
No.
So uh, no, you know, no, but, but older, but in shape, uh, you know, I'm in a shape too, but it, it's just round, you know, so. Uh, but thank you, appreciate it, uh, good night.
Yeah, can I say one more thing, and thank you, Chief, and it's been a pleasure knowing someone that can ride their bike faster than I can drive my Prius, thank you.
It's a low bar. And, and Jim, you know, it's, it's, yeah, I, I said before how much I appreciate your service here, but, but for people that don't know, Jim's whole working life has been a life of service in the Navy, and then as a police officer, police chief, you know, it's a, it's a, a life well played. So thank you for that too. Really do appreciate you. I also really appreciate everybody coming out, it's, it's always good to have input, it's always good to have the questions that people raise. Uh, you know, and some of them went directly from your mouths into conditions on the zoning of that project, for example, right? Just reminders and tightenings and, and all of that, so it's absolutely the right way for that kind of thing to work, appreciate that. I'm also going to make an offer, because I keep hearing things that aren't correct about, you know, how the zoning's changed, how the intent has changed and all of that, and I'm happy to walk through that with people that actually want to learn about it, uh, about why that isn't actually the case. Uh, our zoning is far tighter than it started out, when the city started out, when the city started out, you could have garbage dumps here, you could have quarries here, you could have all sorts of wonderful things right next to your house, uh, that don't exist in our current zoning, so you're right, we've made changes, but they're not changes to the theory of how our zoning works. Uh, and if anything, they're generally tightenings, uh, as I hear often from our, our one developer who does such a great job of preserving land in their development, but also reminds me every time we make a change that I just made something harder. So it's, uh, again, there's a narrative out there, but it's not a narrative that's correct. And uh, I'm happy to help people, if they actually want to learn about it, to do, to do that. Uh, and with that, I will call for adjournment. Yes, ma'am, you absolutely.
For everybody adjourned, um, there were some of you that had in your packet in the front, a campaign finance form that's due by July first. So if you can get it back to me, by July first. I was trying to look at all the people.
Alright, motion, can I get a motion in a second to adjourn, please?
Let's do adjourn. Second.
We have a motion in several seconds, all those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, we stand adjourned at eight forty-one P M., not nearly as well as five thirty A M. We always end with a little town hall session, I'm not interested in talking to anybody about a specific thing that they've already talked about tonight. But if you have a question for staff or whatever, they're all here, we're all here, and if there's not some big public building.
Questions for.
Yes, ma'am.
And I want to make a comment about the bridge um, on Facebook, I am the one who originally posted it, from a friend county in the chat.
Who told you that?
And what, huh?
Who told you that?
Um, my friend Natalie. So I said, the bridge collapsed at Fox Hall. So once I got an update and I found out that there was a fatality, then I updated that. Well, this was at nine thirty-eight when my friend contacted me. Little, I did speak to you this morning, told you that it would be that uh, thing, and I deleted it, because I felt like that we did not need to continue discussing it. And of course, it became a more of a discussion, I did not mean for it to happen, but we need to come up, if that's some, if something like that comes up, and it's not posted on the Chat Hills happening, you know, we're just saying, hey, you all, we have an accident. You know, please don't go this way, we don't need to know all the details, right? I guess, but if, if the citizens were contacted, if something was posted on, you know, on the Facebook posting, on Facebook news feed, on the Chat Hills happenings or everything like that, maybe on the police department, because I did go there to see if anything was posted, I went to all my resources, and there was nothing posted, all I did was ask a question, and it is be.
You know, Renee. You know, Renee, there's, there's no such thing as misinformation, just information, and then people can debate it and add to it, change it. You bring it out.
I didn't call anybody out.
We don't have our own.
Alright, thanks y'all, we'll see you next month.